Welcome to the first hearing of the committee's inquiry into the management of cat populations in New South Wales. I acknowledge the Gadigal people of the Eora Nation, the traditional custodians on the lands on which we are meeting today. I pay my respects to elders past and present and celebrate the diversity of Aboriginal peoples and their ongoing cultures and connections to the lands and waters of New South Wales. I also acknowledge and pay my respects to any Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people joining us today. My name is Emma Hurst and I am Chair of the Committee. I ask everyone in the room to please turn their mobile phones to silent. Parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses in relation to the evidence they give today, however it does not apply to what witnesses say outside of the hearing. I urge witnesses to be careful about making comments to the media or to others after completing their evidence. In addition, the Legislative Council has adopted rules to provide procedural fairness for inquiry participants. I encourage committee members and witnesses to be mindful of these procedures. To each witness, sorry, welcome and thank you for making the time to give evidence today. Could I ask each witness, starting from my left, to please state their name and position title and swear either an oath or an affirmation?
My name's Sarah Legg. I'm a Professor of Wildlife Conservation at Charles Darwin University. And I solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you.
Jack Gough, I'm the Advocacy Director for the Invasive Species Council. I solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. And do either of you have a short opening statement you'd like to make?
Just a short one, thank you Chair. So, thank you so much for the opportunity to give in evidence at this important inquiry and thanks in particular to Minister Hernig and Minister Sharp who made an election commitment that such an inquiry would take place and for following through on that commitment. The Invasive Species Council is an independent, not-for-profit environmental organisation. We advocate for stronger laws, policies, and programmes to keep Australia's incredible biodiversity safe from weeds, feral animals, diseases, and other invaders. Cats are incredible animals and they are loved as pets by millions of households in Australia. Unfortunately for our wildlife, they're also extremely effective hunters and killers of small mammals, birds, frogs, lizards, and insects. Predation by cats is a key threatening process for endangered wildlife under both New South Wales and Commonwealth Environment Law. And cats have unfortunately contributed to at least 20 Australian mammals going extinct and are an identified threat to over 200 nationally listed threatened species. Professor Sarah Legg, a member of our Conservation and Science Committee, will speak in detail to the research on the enormous impact of cats, but the headline numbers are staggering. The average roaming and hunting pet cat kills 110 native animals per year, meaning that if 70% of pet cat owners in Greater Sydney alone allow their cats to roam, that we're talking about a quarter of a billion native animals killed in Greater Sydney by roaming pet cats in this term of Parliament. We can't change the nature of cats, but we can change the culture which allows our pets to roam, hunt, harass, and kill native animals. There is no single intervention that's going to enable that cultural shift, but fundamentally it requires clear rules and expectations that cat owners keep pets contained to their property, clear identification of pets and their ownership, funding for education and compliance, and wide uptake of de-sexing by four months of age. Currently, New South Wales and Western Australia are the only states that do not allow councils to introduce cat containment or curfew requirements. We know that these interventions have wide public support and will also be a win for cat welfare, with cats kept safe at home avoiding injury and premature death due to car strikes, accidents, fights, and disease. For cat containment rules, there are two different pathways that we think government could go down. One of them is going down, introducing statewide rules, and the other is looking at allowing and encouraging councils to introduce their own requirements. We recommend the latter, which is councils being empowered, and happy to talk about that in more detail, but we believe it will allow the level of community engagement and buy-in required to actually get cultural shift on this, rather than it being a statewide imposition. Our key recommendation is that New South Wales looks across the border to what Victoria is doing. There is a lot of uptake by councils and a shift on this because of the way that their legislation is structured. And the five things that we would really like to see from this committee recommending to the New South Wales Government are to amend the New South Wales Companion Animals Act, to enable local governments to enforce anti-roaming laws for pet cats at a local level, to require local governments to develop companion animal management plans and review them regularly, to allocate funding to support compliance, education, de-sexing, identification, and registration programmes, including extending the funding for RSPCA's Keeping Cats Safe at Home Programme that runs out in 2024, making de-sexing mandatory statewide by four months of age, and developing and resourcing a statewide cat management strategy. So I'll hand it to Professor Legg.
I'll just add a little bit more about myself and my work. As I mentioned, I'm a Professor of Wildlife Conservation. I served on the Commonwealth Threatened Species Scientific Committee for 11 years until late last year as the Deputy Chair. I've carried out research on cats on and off most of my professional life. With colleagues, we carried out much of the fundamental research that you will see referred to across many of the submissions to this inquiry. For example, we established the population size of feral cats, we established the predation toll of both feral and pet cats, we identified which native species are most heavily affected by cat predation, and we've carried out field research to fine-tune management options to reduce the impacts of cats. We've also estimated the economic cost of diseases to livestock and people where the pathogens depend on cats for their transmission. Myself and a colleague, Professor John Wunarsky, drafted the new Threat Abatement Plan for Cats. This is the National Threat Abatement Plan. This is the first threat abatement plan to be made jointly by state, territory, and Commonwealth Ministers, except for Queensland, under national environmental law. And that reflects the shared recognition of the severity of the threat that cats pose to our native fauna. The terms of reference mostly focus on pet cats and their managements, so I'll just say a tiny bit more about that. There are more pet cats than feral cats in Australia, so there are over 5 million pet cats. There are fewer than 3 million feral cats. Although pet cats are fed, most of them still hunt, and when they do, only about 15% of what they kill is brought home, so many owners are unaware of what their cat is up to. Each pet cat hunts at about a quarter of the rate of a feral cat, so we've estimated that each pet cat kills an average 110 native animals a year. But whereas the average density of feral cats in the bush is 0.2 per square kilometre, so much less than 1, the density of roaming pet cats is over 40 per square kilometre. So that means that the predation toll per square kilometre is much higher where pet cats are roaming. Many Australian pet cat owners already keep their cats contained. The figure is usually between 30 and 50%, depending where you are, so containment's neither a novel nor a radical idea. So I don't think anyone involved in this inquiry would doubt the devastating impacts that cats have had on Australian wildlife, and I assume that we all care very deeply about animal welfare. So I would imagine that most people agree that the goal of improved cat management should be that wildlife is protected from cats, both feral and pet cats, and that all pet cats are well looked after by caring owners. I look forward to your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I might start with just a couple myself, and I'm happy for either one of you to jump in. You probably, or you may have seen our report recently into the pound crisis and the fact that pounds are already over capacity. And we know that states and councils in Victoria, for example, where they have brought in cat containment policies, they've seen a significantly higher number of cats ending up in the pound system, a significantly higher amount of euthanasia as well in those particular areas. How do we deal with that when we consider the reports that have come out from upper house inquiries in regards to the pound crisis and the fact that there's not enough money already in the pound system, they're already over capacity? And then, of course, on top of that, we've got a major vet shortage as well.
Can you answer that one?
Thank you Chair. A couple things. One of the things I'd suggest, hopefully you'll have the RSPCA giving evidence, and their Keeping Cats Safe at Home report has some really good headline figures about the impact that that education and that work with local councils has had in terms of reducing the number of nuisance cats, the number of cats that are coming into that pound system where that's occurring. So that, I guess, you know, going to what I was saying at the start, for us, this cultural shift that needs to occur on the issue of management of pet cats will require education, engagement, particularly, you know, groups that are low socio-economic, but we know that where that engagement occurs and people are keeping cats safely at home, then the number of cats that are going into those systems has been reduced. So there's good evidence from Walgett in a regional council, there's good evidence from some of the metropolitan councils as well. So that's one aspect that we really want...
So can I just jump in here? And I agree with you, and I have seen that sort of research from RSPCA, but obviously, you know, it's quite different when you're talking about punitive laws or policies within councils versus these sort of educational programmes. And so are you saying that we would need some kind of major educational programme first, or do you see that possibly, you know, expanding that educational programme will also have huge benefits and maybe therefore we don't actually need to go into the punitive space as well? You know, because they're quite different, so I'm just wondering how you...
Yeah. So I guess we see that having clear rules is a really important part for making the cultural transition that we need on this issue, but the implementation of those rules needs to be very sensitive to what we're trying to achieve, which is a cultural shift on how people keep cats. So it's one of the key reasons that we think that those rules should be allowed to be implemented at a local level. So there's a really good example of the difference between what's going on in Queensland and in Victoria. So in Queensland, there's a model local government set of rules which mean that cats need to be contained, which I think 75 of 75 Queensland councils have adopted, but when we've called councils, most of them aren't aware that it's a rule, there isn't any real engagement with communities. By contrast, in Victoria, the process that they've gone down is saying to councils that you can bring in rules around containment and you have to bring in a companion animals' management plan that then has to be reviewed and reported on annually and remade every four years. And that process has allowed a lot of community engagement, such that now more than 50% of Victorian councils have those rules, you know, Swan Hill...
Sorry, I'll just interrupt you there, just because I know that, you know, the RSPCA report says that, you know, well, actually, they concluded that councils and cat containment regulations have not been able to demonstrate any measurable reduction in cat complaints or cats wandering at large, and they therefore don't actually support this punitive measure that you're proposing. And in the Victorian councils that have actually put into place the punitive measures, they have cited that they've had a significant increase in costs, a significant increase in euthanasia, whereas these educational programmes have still been effective, they haven't had those real negative sort of other sides of it, even if in Victoria they have had these educational programmes running alongside it. So if Victoria, we're still seeing this huge increase in euthanasia, huge increase in costs for councils, and then I assume to ratepayers as well, but when you can see that education alone is still having a significant benefit, why would we want to pick education and the punitive laws, which are highly problematic in Victoria when education alone is still quite, is showing significant benefits?
So similar for dog management, we have laws, and then it is about how we educate, enforce, and engage on those laws. And so that approach allows the framework then for communities to understand their responsibilities as pet owners, as well as giving some tools to councils and being backed up by that education. So we'd say it actually needs to be a suite of these things. You, I guess, in terms of the punitive side...
But so weren't you saying that they were doing that in Victoria? Like, that wasn't your point that you were making before, that in Victoria they are doing both? That in Victoria they are doing the educational work around the fact that they're bringing in these punitive laws? But what I'm saying is what we're hearing and what we're seeing in a lot of the submissions that we've received in this inquiry is that they are, they're hitting the most disadvantaged communities the hardest. People who can't afford caddios, people who are renting, who are being told that they rent a property have to keep cats outside, people who are trying to leave domestic violence situations. It's affecting the amount of money that councils have to charge their ratepayers, it's affecting the, creating a significant increase in euthanasia, despite the fact that there's educational programmes running alongside them. So I'm trying to understand why you would still support that model over an education-only model.
So, in terms of punitive, like, let's be clear, what we're talking about in Victoria is, you know, one penalty unit fine for a first offence, up to a three penalty unit fine for subsequent offences. So this is not, you know, a huge imposition, it's a cost on people.
But I'm wondering why we wouldn't want that at all, yeah.
Because I guess our submission is that having that cultural shift requires us to have some clarity about what the expectations are as a pet owner. So as a pet owner, there are some clear responsibilities that are associated with having that pet, and that means that you have, that being able to keep that pet contained to your property is one of those responsibilities. We accept that that shift is not going to happen overnight, that it's not something that is going to happen through a purely, you know, punitive basis, but having clear rules allows the community then to start to understand those responsibilities and has to be backed up with funding for that education, for that compliance, and for making sure that we have registration and that we've got the de-sexing going alongside it. So this is a suite of rules. Education by itself is not going to shift this issue just as punitive...
But didn't you say before that the RSPCA's programme, and I've looked at their report as well, that it has actually had some really significant benefits on education alone? Whereas now you're saying that without the punitive side of it, the education alone's not going to work?
I'm not saying it's not going to work, I'm saying that together, this puts a suite of pressure on the cat population that is allowed to roam, which then means we have less pressure on our native wildlife, which means that we have less of our native wildlife being hunted, being killed, being harassed.
But, but, sorry, but can I then get your response to what I said before? And so I know there's a lot of other people who want to ask questions, but the RSPCA report has concluded that it hasn't been effective, that it actually hasn't reduced the number of cats wandering, it hasn't. And I haven't found any research that's been cited in any of our submissions that there is evidence that those punitive sections have changed anything. We've seen evidence that there is a change from educational programmes, yes, but we haven't seen any evidence that it's protecting wildlife, that it's reducing the number of cats wandering, that it's reducing the number of cat complaints, where we have education and punitive measures. And so I'm just really still struggling to understand why you're still pushing for that model when there's no evidence for it, when education alone has been shown by the RSPCA and others to be effective at actually protecting wildlife.
I might hand to Professor Legg.
Yeah, I might just add something there. I mean, I think to some extent there might be no evidence because a lot of these measures are actually quite new, and then also monitoring of, monitoring of the outcomes of various management actions is very scarce, particularly with, including with cat management. But I think the other thing to say is that a couple of years ago, we surveyed local governments right across Australia, including New South Wales, and one of the overriding messages they sent back is that you need a multi-pronged approach, so you need a bit of everything, because you're trying to reach a very diverse audience.
And was this more of a hypothesis from councils rather than sort of based on any research?
It was based on their experience, I would say. And so I'll give you an example. So I, one of my, I live right next to Tweed Shire, so I've done a little bit of work with them, and they've had a really, they've invested heavily in trying to improve pet cat management in their shire, and they've got areas of the shire that are zoned as cat containment, cat curfew, and also cat prohibition, so no cats allowed in those suburbs. And they've had a bit of monitoring in the bushland surrounding those suburbs to see what difference those, those actions make to the incidence of wandering cats in the bushland. And that's a really rare dataset, so that goes back to where I started, like, people just don't monitor what happens when you do different things at local government level, so it is difficult for us to say concretely. But based on that experience over, I think they did that programme for about four years, they said that unless they have the power to follow up with people who are not containing their cats, for example, in a cat containment suburb, they feel toothless, like they can't affect change by education alone. And they had de-sexing programmes and really cool graphics on websites, so you could actually go on to their website, click on a page, and see which pet cats were turning up on camera traps in the bushland. None of those initiatives by themselves was enough to change the behaviour of a certain proportion of the public, and they really felt, Tweed Shire felt, that they needed law to be on their side to help them make that change.
Okay, I'm going to throw to the Honourable Wes Fang, because I know he's been waiting. I think he's got a couple of questions, he's just online.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Gough, I just wanted to ask very briefly, in relation to your reference to the RSPCA's, I think, Keeping Cats Safe at Home Programme, are you aware of the report that was delivered by the Committee Four, I think it was, in relation to the POKT Act recently?
I'm aware, but not over the details of it.
Okay. It cited some governance concerns in relation to the RSPCA. Are you confident the RSPCA in New South Wales is adequately equipped to deliver, I guess, those programmes alone?
I'm very confident that the New South Wales Government takes seriously their engagement with the RSPCA.
I'm not talking about the government, I'm talking about the RSPCA themselves.
My assurances around the RSPCA come from my confidence that the New South Wales Government appropriately engages with the RSPCA. It's not something that we have a particular, you know, detailed engagement with. I'm sure the New South Wales Government makes sure that they are fulfilling their obligations appropriately.
Well, as part of what the inquiry uncovered, uncovered, which was that the government doesn't actually have enough oversight in relation to the RSPCA. So again, I'll ask you, given that the, I guess, inquiry cited that the government doesn't quite have the oversight in relation to the RSPCA, do you believe that they're appropriately equipped to deliver this when you're looking at such a punitive programme?
It's not something we've done detailed policy work on.
Okay, but you've made a submission on it, and you've come and given evidence about it, so surely you must have done some detailed looking, research, anything?
We haven't made a submission on RSPCA and the way that they're structured.
I mean, as in, you've talked about the RSPCA providing, I guess, part of that programme in relation to cat...
Chair, can I raise a point of order?
Yeah, so there's been a point of order, yeah.
Given the time limit, I mean, I think there's been an answer given to Mr. Fang. If he wants to continue badgering the witness, then maybe he could take that up by way of, you know, question...
Yeah, look, I think it's probably gone a little bit outside of the terms of reference.
I've got a number of questions, and I presume everyone else...
Yeah, there are...
All right, I'm happy to hand over to Chair, I think I've...
Thank you. I'll throw to Ms. Boyd.
Oh, thank you very much, Chair. And thank you to both of you for coming today and for all of your work in this area. I think we have, well, from my perspective, we have pretty broad agreement with most of what you are presenting here today. I just wanted to get to the bottom of this. So as you know, the Greens' cat plan talks about a statewide set of rules, 24-hour cat containment, to be implemented and enforced by councils in the same way as you would for dogs.
Yes.
In your opening statement, you said to be enforced at local level, which is what we agree with as well, but then you said council-led curfews. So can you explain why you would want a different curfew for different LGAs, rather than just a statewide, same rule applies to everybody?
Yeah, and maybe I can talk to some of the broader legislative framework around that, and I know Professor Legg has some more specific examples as well, but because this is a cultural shift, it's something where we need to change the way that pet owners, you know, manage cats and the way that they are responsible for the pets that they, that they look after. That cultural shift means that we need buy-in and engagement at the community level, and so the way that Victoria has done that, and seems to have done it quite effectively, is that they've essentially set up, the power is given to councils to be able to bring in rules around cat containment, cat curfews, and then they've created through their legislation, so through Part 5A for them, a requirement then to have domestic animal management plans. And what's happened since that was first required in 2021 is that progressively councils have been bringing in those plans, and those plans, so they all had to have them in by 2021, they have to remake them every four years, and during the remake, a lot of them have started to bring in these cat containment rules at a point where they are feeling like they understand what the requirements are, they understand how they might be able to implement them, what the resourcing response is, what the education needs. So you have this sort of push from the council and an ownership of the council. By contrast, in Queensland, that is essentially, effectively statewide, but councils don't have any ownership of that, it's something that's just been imposed on them, and yet they have to enforce it. They often aren't resourced to do so, they often don't have people within those councils who are aware of and paying attention.
I'm worried about time, sorry, that's why I'm rushing, but that's really useful. So if we had both, if we had statewide rules, so that you could have a statewide education campaign that told everybody what was required of them in relation to their cats, and it wouldn't be, in this LGA, it's a 24-hour curfew, but this one, it's, you know, night time or whatever, if you had that statewide rule, but then you had a requirement that you had to have this council-led management, would that then achieve both?
I might hand to Professor Legg around some of the concerns in Indigenous communities and others as well.
Yeah, I think it's really good to make the end goal really clear to people, and the end goal is happy pets, cared for by owners, kept at home. But particularly in the immediate term, like, as we're heading towards that goal, there's going to be a lot of situations where that's actually really difficult to achieve and could be counterproductive. So I do quite like the idea of having a really clear statewide ambition, but then allowing local governments wiggle room to develop plans that suit the local conditions, and then also foster that sense of ownership as well. And in some cases, there might be more transition, longer transition periods might be needed to get to that end goal. But yeah, I'm just worried about, you know, there'd be some Indigenous communities where a statewide rule like that would be really, really difficult to enforce.
So statewide, but with, sort of, I guess, then, local variation, exceptions?
Local variation.
But also taking your point, Mr. Gough, to get that engagement at a local level, so that people really understand, engage with it.
And then also, at a local level, there's also, and so in Victoria, and in the ACT, you're saying some of this, there's also potential variability in terms of impact of cats in areas where you might have slightly different rules. So there are areas where you might say, this is an area where we actually can't have any cats roaming, because it's a high conservation area. So, and councils being able to designate areas where, you know, they might be introducing those cat containment rules ahead of time for certain particular areas, or where they've got communities that are particularly on board already, the idea of bringing in cat containment, they might be advanced in when that comes in. So I guess, yeah, we're very keen for this to be something that is, is where we're shifting in the same way that the cultural expectation is that dogs are kept controlled, lots of countries in the world, that doesn't happen, it happens for us. But we also know particularly remote Indigenous communities that just enforcing dog containment and control rules actually doesn't work straight away, and so we do need that nuance. Having that ownership, though, for councils, I think the key element of Victoria's legislation that's really important is the requirement to create these domestic animal management plans. They have to be reviewed annually, they have to, and then they have to publish, under the legislation, they have to publish the implementation report annually, and they have to be remade with community engagement every four years. And so that basically creates a process by which that community involvement can be ratcheted up and that change can occur.
Thank you. I'm going to throw to Honourable Peter Pymrose now.
I've got time to ask you the questions, but you don't have time to answer them. So I was wondering if I could just ask you to put, take two things on notice. One is, you mentioned Victoria as compared to Queensland. Can you take on notice, please, if there's anywhere in the world that you believe is doing this well? If there are special features? I mean, I'm thinking of the US, you know, UK, Europe, I mean, wherever, in Asia. Where is, if there's anyone doing it well, that we should be looking at as a model? And what parts of that model work? The second thing is, in relation to the recommendations that local government New South Wales has given us, they've made a number of recommendations in relation to amendments to the Companion Animals Act. I was wondering if you could have a look at those, and I'd be interested in your comments on those recommendations, please.
Be happy to, and I actually meant, I emailed the committee to ask if we could table two things here. One of them is, and unfortunately it's A3, but a comparison of all the rules between each of the state jurisdictions that we've put together, and the second one is a briefing note on this from Birdlife Australia, Australian Wildlife Society, Nature Conservation Council, WIAS, and ourselves on key recommendations. So there were two things, I was... So there were two things I was keen to table and happy to. One thing I would say is, Australia is a little bit different to other countries in the make-up of our wildlife, the presence of these, you know, effective predators in our landscape, and so compared to other parts of the world where maybe cats are naturally present, cats are an introduced species in Australia and so particularly impactful on our native wildlife.
Chair, could I please put one question on notice?
Sorry, I did tell the Honourable Aileen McDonald, I'll throw to her next.
I can do the same, I'll put two questions on notice as well.
We can load you up with questions on notice, I'm afraid.
So in your recommendations, you basically said something about changes or amendments to the Companion Animals Act. Local councils are empowered and allocate funding to, for that, so I wondered if, and it follows on from the Honourable Peter Primrose, is what specific amendments would you, to the act, would you recommend? And the funding models, do you suggest to sustainably support catch, cat management programmes? And do you have a figure on that, like, what amount of funding do you think? So that's my questions on notice.
Excellent. Part 68A of the Victorian Domestic Animals Act and Part 23 of the two.
Sorry, Mr Gough, I will ask you just to take them on notice, just because we're already over time, but I think there's one more.
Yeah, Professor Legg, I'm really curious about your research in relation to, and your views and opinions in relation to the trap neuter release support programmes, and the assumption, I think, that cats are always in the environment, there's a place for them, therefore we release them. Any work or views that you've got on that method or programme, I would be very, very interested in if you're able to provide. And then just the final one is, the Natural Resources Commission report about reducing risk during the future makes some, you know, very poignant findings about law changes in New South Wales, cites some of, references some of your work particularly in relation to biosecurity as well, and the cost of, I think, six billion or whatever. If you could provide the committee with any summary or pertinent points in relation to the findings of the NRC report? Thank you very much.
Well, thank you both for your evidence today. There was questions obviously taken on notice, so the secretary will be in contact with you in relation to those questions on notice, and I thank you again for your time today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, but you said, no, I understand that, I understand that, but there's a lot. Thank you, I now welcome our next witness. Thank you, Ms Vesc, for your time to give evidence today. Could I start by asking you to please state your name, position, title, and swear either an oath or an affirmation?
Christina Vesc, Chief Executive Officer of the Cat Protection Society, and I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you. Do you have a short opening statement you'd like to make?
I have.
Great.
Thank you. Complex problems don't have easy solutions. Pretending they do is unhelpful, it delays actions that could be taken now, and it creates mistrust and alienation rather than cooperation and understanding. As Cat Protection says in our submission, there are things local councils could do now to assist communities with cat management, but only a few councils do much at all. We work with domestic cats, so that means we work with people. As Cat Protection has long argued, we need to take a one health, one welfare approach to successfully tackle issues that arise when there are seemingly intractable collisions between people, animals and the environment. That requires effort, patience and knowledge, and it requires trust and cooperation. Early age dissexing of cats is critical. Intensive programmes targeted to areas of high need, combined with helpful education and support, are proven to make an impact. Councils could make a difference now, supporting such programmes, collecting data, engaging with their communities, sharing education resources that have been developed by animal welfare charities like Cat Protection, instead of saying their hands are tied. Of course, more funding for programmes would be helpful, but there's still capacity to achieve more with the little we already have.
Thank you. I might jump in with a couple of questions myself. Thank you again for coming today. Is it fair to say that councils currently rely very heavily on rescue organisations to do a lot of the heavy lifting when it comes to cats, in regards to dissexing and in regards to rehoming? And if that is true, what will it mean on these completely unresourced, you know, most of these groups are completely unresourced in regards to government funding, what will it mean on them if we're going to then see, say, cat containment punitive laws brought in? What would it mean for those rescue groups when we see more cats coming into council pounds?
The first thing is, yes, councils do depend on unpaid rescues, charities, other informal groups, very much. I think I noted in our submission that Liverpool Council received a grant total of three cats in an entire financial year, same with inner west council, it's obviously, you know, someone else is doing something, or if no one's doing anything, then there's a problem. I mean, the first thing is, if they can't do anything now, how are they going to police that? Where's that going to come from? Where are those resources going to come from? What is the police force of rangers they're going to hire to catch cats?
So can I just unpack what you're saying there? So, yeah, if they don't have the funding now for some of these other programmes you mentioned in your opening statement, is that what you mean?
Absolutely, and I think there are many things now, even with the little funding that they have, and I made the point, councils are really different, some are more wealthy, but there are things they can do that don't cost a lot of money, and that includes education, that includes basically their websites, it includes a different culture, it includes listening to their companion animal management staff, and listening to their communities, working with them. I think, I read in one of the submissions about an independent rescue person who was called upon by council to do certain things, helping cats in the community, and then charged him a great deal of money to register cats. I mean, that sort of practice is, I mean, it's shocking, and how does that build trust? How does that solve issues? I think so much of it, and previous speakers spoke about culture, there's a lot of culture we have to change in councils. A lot of us working in the charitable sector are working really hard on positive education campaigns, and I think our research is showing that cat owners most keep their cats to their property or curfewed at night, there's a way to go, and that's not always possible, you know, it's just, and it's not always as essential as it might be if you're, you know, bordering bushland, they're really different environments, and I just don't see that there is anything to be gained in pursuing a kind of one-size-fits-all, because it won't, and it doesn't, and I just think it creates barriers to working together, and that's, anything that's difficult needs people to work together.
You mentioned sort of the fact that there's currently no funding, and so at the moment, you know, the councils heavily rely on charitable organisations to step in and do most of the work around cat management, cat protection. If there suddenly was this bucket of money that could be put towards having rangers for something like punitive cat containment laws, do you feel that that money would be better spent in another aspect that would help cats and wildlife and achieve more than using that bucket of money for rangers?
Absolutely.
And can you tell me what that would be?
Well, I think, and, you know, I'd say that with Fairfield City and City of Sydney, we have been working with them over many, many years where they do put money into their community, working with us on subsidised cat dissexing programmes, and the $1.5 million grant that we got from the New South Wales Government where we're doing the DIVA programme and we're targeting that in a few council areas, is going really well. But if you're talking about, and again, it's going to depend on the environment, but I think if you had a pot of money, spending it to, first of all, intervene and have cats dissexed early is critical because it stops the breeding cycle, and then, secondly, working with your community, because a lot of people can't afford containment, a lot of people are renting, they're not allowed to do things, councils don't even necessarily make it easy, you know, some of them will have things on their website saying, oh, you can build something, but, you know, you might need approval, and they just don't make it easy.
By that you mean like a caper fence?
Yes, sorry, yes, yeah, caper fence and things like that. They're, you know, they can do demonstration projects, they can assist with protecting wildlife in their areas through other means as well, and not just looking at cats, but looking at, you know, water and shade and trees and continuity of trees and their planning when they're doing new developments. I mean, I think part of the issue here is that we have this moral panic that's directed at cats alone, and there are so many things that impact on native wildlife and, you know, animals and plants, and so we can't just look at cats as though that one thing is going to sort of create this miracle of a revival of nature, you know? And the thing is too, that the cats belong to people, and even the cats who aren't living inside a house with a person, there are a lot of people who care for them deeply, and we have to consider their wellbeing. How is it okay to kind of mentally torture people the way Newcastle Port did with the shooting of cats at Stopton Bray Court? You know, you just can't do things like that, it's obscene. So it goes back to the earlier point, yes, spend the money on constructive, positive things that do minimal damage, cause minimal harm and maximise benefit.
Thank you, and just one more before I throw to the government for questions. You've sort of hinted that there would be sort of almost, it would further disadvantage communities who are already in a disadvantage, for whatever reason, whether they're renting, whether they have financial constraints because of cost of living crisis, things like that. Can you sort of just delve a bit more into that, how these punitive laws would actually further affect communities already struggling?
Well, I mean, I think it's kind of going to a point of being, you know, extremely la di da and saying you're only allowed to have a cat if you're rich, you know? I mean, that's the bottom line of it, you know, you can't have one if you rent, even though we've, you know, fought really hard for rental laws to be improved so that people who rent can have pets. If you don't have a lot of money, it can be difficult, and again, this is still assuming sort of owned pet cats, because we know that there exist community cats, and there are people who are trying to bring those populations under control, to dissex them, to reduce them, those populations over time, but that will take time, and you, I mean, I think that there's a massive social justice issue with simply saying you have to have all these fancy things in order to have a cat, and cats bring a lot of joy to many people, and, you know, they're actually, you know, they're still quite expensive to keep and look after, but a lot less than some other pets, and they make a difference to people's lives. You know, people get up in the morning because they look after a cat, they make friends in their community because they're looking after cats, and I think I included in our submission some of the comments from our DIVA clients that are really telling, because one of them was, she's a pensioner and she said, oh, these cats chose my garden, like, she didn't choose them. Somehow, you know, the cat network said this lady's friendly, and she was trying to do her best for them, but she couldn't afford to dissex all those cats, so until our programme came and assisted her, they would have kept breeding, and she would have been distressed, the community would have been distressed, her neighbours, the cats, but if you can get in with an intervention early, accept that this is a reality, it's not, you know, we can't live in a fantasy thinking everyone's going to live in this, you know, house with caper fencing and all the lovely things that I know a lot of people have, everyone can't afford that.
And just before I throw to the Honourable Peter Primrose, and I love the name of your programme, DIVA, but just for Hansa, can you actually tell us what that acronym is?
It stands for Dissexing Identification Vaccination Assistance for Cats.
Thank you. The Honourable Peter Primrose.
Just two quick questions, if I can. Can, is there anywhere in the world, including Australia, that you think is doing a great job in relation to managing cat populations? That you could say to us, look, they're doing well, you should have a close look at what they're doing?
I think as the people before me said, the experiences aren't necessarily transferable. Different environments, different populations, I think that as well as looking at the built environment, when we look at situations of cat populations, the social environment, we can't just look, I mean, and certainly the natural environment, but I, I would say I'm not aware.
Okay. Could you just take that on notice and think about it? And very happy, and I take the point that was made earlier by the invasive species witnesses, that, you know, there are issues around, you know, different countries are different, but even within Australia, are there any places that are doing it well? And the same question that I asked previously, maybe you'd like to take it on notice, but local government, New South Wales, in their submission, has raised a number of significant issues that they believe need to be clarified in the Companion Animals Act in relation to this, including specifying the powers that a council has to seize a cat. There's a whole range of those. Could you take that on notice for me? Take on notice their recommendations to amend the Companion Animals Act, and the secretary will provide those to you, and I'd just be interested in your comments on those, as to whether you'd support those or not. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The Honourable Aileen McDonald.
Thank you. The DIVA programme that you mentioned, so it was funded last year and runs out or has run out?
No, it was for 23, 24, 24, 25, and because we just received it sort of at, you know, beginning of July, it took us a few months to sort of set up, find vets, work out the programme, so it didn't really hit the ground with it at all until about September last year, and then it was sort of a soft start, and it's quite taken off, but we've dissexed more than 2,000 cats through that programme now.
2,000 cats, and in what area, is there one specific area you're doing it in?
We're focused on Fairfield, Canterbury Bankstown, City of Sydney, Bathurst, and we also do work with Narabri. They're our main, we have worked with Narabri and Bathurst for a long time. for a long time and we have good relationships with those councils. Um, we'd love to do more regional work, it can be difficult even finding vets. Um, but yeah, that's, that's sort of the, the target areas.
And have you been in, like, because it's only been operating for a short time, been able to measure the effectiveness or the impact that the early dissexing has had in those areas?
At this stage, we're relying on the feedback from the clients. Um, we have not been able to get councils to collect data that were requested at the outset so that we could measure using any kind of data they collect. Um, we are working on mapping where, where we're doing this. Um, to, but basically the answer is we will be looking at that and doing that research ourselves. Um, we don't have a lot to go on from councils.
Okay. And, um, and you also mentioned in your submission about the Good Neighbour Project. How do you think councils could be encouraged to, um, take on projects like the Good Neighbour Project?
The, we have-
Government do?
Sorry?
What could the government do to encourage more councils?
Um, well, the Office of Local Government, um, and the Minister at the time were, were very supportive of it. Um, and a handful of councils, but, um, you know, there's, there's basically it's a stack of resources, um, videos, materials in community languages, fact sheets, do it yourself, enclosure instructions. We created a website called catcare.org.au, which is for people who work with cats. We sent information about that to councils, we offered to support them with activities, projects in their communities, we put out a kind of ideas sheet on things they could do. I think it really is kind of, you know, up to them to then say, instead of doing sort of, you know, once a year microchipping day, to be continually engaged with the community in these matters. And to develop and work with their companion animal management teams. And a, a lot of councils, you know, have superb people working in that area. Um, and they're not necessarily given the time or resources to do that sort of work, the education work. And, and I think there's a real opportunity there that is being missed.
Thank you. I have other questions, but, um, I'll put them on supplementary so that-
Thank you, Miss Boyd.
Thank you. Um, and thank you for everything that you do. Um, I still have, uh, friends who have adopted cats from your, um, uh, your premises who are, yeah, just delighted, uh, with them. Um, I just wanted to talk about the dissexing, um, aspects of, of, so I've heard from a lot of people that, who say that, you know, dissexing is pretty much the most effective way of managing cat populations. And I, I hear what you say about the, the barriers when it comes to registration. Um, how much, under that Diva program, how much per cat do you think it's, the, um, dissexing cost would be?
It, um, it sort of have a, a range of prices with vets. Um, they are discounting them for us. Um, let's say around three hundred dollars for, you know, health check, pain relief, dissexing, depends sometimes, you know. Um, male cats are a lot cheaper, the surgery is a lot faster. Um, but if you average sort of that, I think that, trying to remember, I think we'd sort of put it at about three fifty, like including vaccination and chipping, but but it sort of depends, but it's, you know, for, uh, we also have discount dissexing referral programs that aren't Diva. Um, and I think our Epsos report showed also that there's, there's a difference between what people think dissexing will cost and what it does. So a lot of people are put off or delay it because they think it's going to cost more than it might. Um, most vets will lose money doing dissexing because it's one of those things they kind of see as a social service. So, um, and certainly the vets who work with us are super generous with discounting. But is that kind of sufficient answer for you?
No, it's useful. I was thinking about, you know, obviously for a, an individual to get their cat dissexed, it's going to be a bit more than that, you would think if they were getting it from a, you know, sort of a one-off rather than part of a program.
Uh, they could probably sort of depends get between yeah, around about a hundred and fifty to two hundred dissexing, but then um, that doesn't include the chipping and it doesn't include vaccination. Um, our adopt a stray program's a hundred dollars and that's subsidized, you know, by us. So if people find a stray cat and they don't qualify for the Diva program and they want to keep the stray cat and bring them into their home, they can go through our program and we provide all the support for them on cat care information and refer them to the vet. So they get all those things done for a hundred dollars.
I was speaking with One Pound, who were telling me their sort of head of, um, of cat adoption was saying that out of all of the cats that they get brought in, um, that have been found stray, they've got sort of a ninety percent rate of those cats not being microchipped, so only ten percent of everything, every cat that they get through their doors is microchipped. Um, do you think that if we were to, um, introduce a, a cat containment strategy or laws, that we would need a period of time to make sure that people could microchip their cats first?
Well, I think a lot of those cats are probably, you know, they aren't owned by a single person in the first place. So, you know, we don't really have a census of that population, but there are many cats who aren't owned by a single person. And I know from our Diva program, there are people who would be willing to have those cats dissexed to contain that population. But when they find out, they also have to chip and register, then they're not prepared to do that because they're unable to take that cat, you know, and say, this is my cat and can't do all those things.
So that adoption bit is the problem, the taking that, whatever you want to call it, semi-owned or community cat.
I think we've got a few different categories, you know, there, there are, um, there are owned cats. Um, and in, in those cases, it's letting people know the importance of early age dissexing. But generally, I think most people are getting their cats from pounds and shelters where they're already dissexed.
Yeah.
Or even if, and it's a very small minority of cats who are, um, adopted by breeders, but most of the registered breeders are dissexing before they rehome. Um, so a lot of it is, you know, it's an informal acquisition. Doesn't make it less meaningful, but it does mean that the cat necessar- hasn't necessarily had all that work done.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, given this, let me check if there's anybody else with questions, otherwise I've just got another one that I'll quickly throw to you, just because we've got a couple of minutes left. Um, do you see part of the solution, and, and I know this came up as a recommendation in the Pound Enquirer in regards to cat rescue organizations also receiving funding. Um, when we talk about cat management more broadly and how we actually care for all the different cat populations, is part of that solution then actually funding these rescue groups to rehome these animals, to run these programs of mass dissexing? Um, is that a huge part of that solution and can you talk a little bit about that?
I think it would be enormously helpful. I know with some of the clients we've been working with through Diva, um, they have been doing rescue out of their own pockets. Um, and so by that, I don't mean they're the people who are the rescue organizations taking, um, cats away from pounds, but the ones who are finding them on the street and looking after them and trying to find homes for them. And the feedback from them has been phenomenal in saying, I'm rehoming a dissexed kitten, that's amazing, you know, I, I feel so confident. I don't have to rely on the person going ahead and doing those things. And, and by that point too, it can become really expensive because the cat might be older, their registration, because they're not adopted from a pound or shelter, there's registration costs. Um, so it becomes quite expensive for the person. Um, which again can be not necessarily an entire barrier, but when people have to save up, um, you know, that's what Professor Giles Beatty called the, the pregnancy gap. It's, is when, you know, they're planning to dissex the cat and they have not been able to do it. And next minute, the cats had their first litter and, you know, that can be as young as sort of five months old.
And, and just one more quickly, I know that, um, you, as part of the grant that you received, you've dissexed over one thousand eight hundred cats today. Do you have any indication as to how many reduced kittens and litters that that impact would have had? Or you can take that on notice if you like, but it would just be interesting to know, I mean, one thousand eight hundred dissexed cats, a lot. I'm just wondering, what kind of flow-on impact does that have?
I think that y- you could do lots of different sort of estimations, but even if you just imagined that half of them weren't going to be dissexed, so it's nine hundred. They could have had three litters by now, say of four cats each. And I can't do that maths in my head right now, but it's a lot.
Yeah.
Three days. Yep, but, yeah, so, I mean, it is, it's, it's incredibly, um, the impact is enormous. You know, particularly because cats are very fertile. And, um, but sadly, the kittens don't always have a very good life in, in these big populations if they're not dissexed because of fighting, disease, if they're not vaccinated, all those things. So everything becomes better with an early intervention of vaccination and dissexing, and it becomes more manageable. And the people who are doing that caring work have better mental health and they're better. And, you know, I, I just can't thank them enough, you know, they're using their own money, their own car, their own time. A lot of them, you know, that, that might be the pension I mentioned before, but a lot of them are working as well. It's hard work and they're doing this because they can't look away, you know, they see what is there and they see themselves as needing to help. And I think what councils can do is recognise that, respect it and work with those people.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for your evidence and your time today. Um, if there was any questions on notice, the secretary will be in contact with you or if any, um, members have questions later, we can send those through to you. Um, and thank you again for your time today. Uh, we'll now break for a short morning tea break and be back at ten forty-five.
Thank you.
Thank you and welcome back to the inquiry. I now welcome our next witnesses and thank them for giving their time to give evidence today. Um, could I ask each witness, starting from my left, to please state their name, position, title and swear either an oath or an affirmation?
Dr Gemma Ma, project manager, keeping cats safe at home at RSPCA New South Wales. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you.
Troy Wilkie, senior government relations manager at RSPCA NSW. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me is the truth, the whole truth and I think the truth.
Thank you. Uh, do either of you have a short opening statement you'd like to make?
Yes, we both have a, a short one.
Yeah, fantastic.
Thank you, Chair, and committee members for the opportunity to present RSPCA NSW's perspective on cat management. Our submission offers a balanced, evidence-based approach to addressing this complex issue, balancing environmental protection. Uh, animal welfare and community needs cost effectively. Drawing on my experience as a senior advisor to the NSW Minister of Local Government in my current role at RSPCA NSW. I hope to share a decade's worth of engagement on this topic with councils, government officials and animal welfare organisations. I am joined by Dr Gemma Ma, a veterinarian with a PhD in human animal interactions and companion animal population management. Through Keeping Cats Safe at Home, a four-year project funded by the state government through the environmental trust. She has led groundbreaking research on free roaming cat management and human behaviour change. We thank the state government for providing two and a half million dollars to fund this program. I acknowledge Minister Sharp's continued support of the program and Minister Honig's continued interest in the issues of this inquiry. If cats were not already here and somebody proposed to introduce them, I'm confident the public would either reject the proposal outright or require that they be contained to a person's property. As we already do with every other domestic animal. However, the financial, social and animal welfare and ethical impacts of reversing longstanding. Free roaming policies are significant. Councils are responsible for helping cats that are homeless or lost. However, many councils refuse to manage cats altogether. This is very disappointing, given that councils are absolutely tremendous at delivering local services. Some cite a lack of resources despite having adequate funds that they choose to spend elsewhere. Others justify it by claiming that the act prohibits them from doing so. Since the mid-two thousands, OLG has issued circulars and guidance to councils outlining their obligations in this context. And at the end of this old table, circular A seven one nine zero one zero is one recent example. The state government also plays a critical role in cat management and can do more to ensure that proven and cost-effective cat management measures are well-resourced. We welcome the Minister of Local Government's commitment to conducting a holistic review of the Companion Animals Act. And the Companion Animals Fund and congratulate OLG's staged launch of the new companion animal registry. In February twenty-two, the state government announced sixty-eight point two million dollars of animal welfare funding for the twenty-three twenty-four budget. However, the following twenty-four twenty-five budget allocates twenty-one million dollars for animal welfare. Delivering a sixty-nine point two percent reduction in annual welfare funding. And I'll table four documents at the end of this that demonstrate that. The problems we face are a policy choice that put an unsustainable burden on charities and rehoming organisations. This inquiry presents an opportunity for local government and state governments to consider the regularly substandard working conditions. And immense levels of stress put on pound and charity staff and volunteers to change this policy choice. Targeted cat desexing programs offer the best return on investment to address the goals. Of ethically managing cats and helping their carers become responsible guardians. And I'll hand it over to Dr Ma to discuss this in detail. Before we open up the questions.
Good morning and thank you for this opportunity. So we face three separate but related cat management challenges in New South Wales. The first are owned pet cats who roam, creating a nuisance for neighbours and predating wildlife. The second are populations of unowned or stray cats who often have poor welfare. They fill up our shelters and they're still euthanased by the thousands each year. And the third are the three living or feral cats. That constantly feed into urban centres searching for food and they contribute to the unowned cat population. RSPCA New South Wales had almost seven thousand cats come through our doors last year, most of whom were sick, injured or infant strays. Our call centre receives close to eight hundred calls each month requesting assistance with stray cats. Stray cats are the largest cohort of animals we care for as our organisation, far exceeding even our cruelty cases and surrendered animals. And right now we have more than five hundred orphaned kittens in the homes of our volunteer foster carers. Because the overall statewide need is far beyond what we can accommodate, we have to prioritise them. We only take in the sickest, the most injured, the youngest. Infant strays. This issue of unowned or stray cats is related to the issue of owned cats roaming. So about half of all the five point three million pet cats in Australia were passively acquired by people who hadn't planned to become a cat owner. Many of these cats started their life in that unowned population. And people had a stray kitten turn up on their doorstep or they found a stray cat at work. If we reduce the number of people who are accidentally ending up with a pet cat, we could have millions fewer owned cats who need to be contained. Our approach to cat management at RSPCA New South Wales is holistic, it's humane, it's evidence-based. We have four key recommendations. The first is to fund statewide targeted cat desexing programs. This is the only method of cat population management that has proven to actually work. We've shown this approach consistently results in rapid reductions in free roaming cat population density, council nuisance complaints, council pound intake. And euthanasia. For example, where we've done this through keeping cats safe at home. For two years, shelter intake has reduced in Parramatta by seventy-four percent, in Campbelltown by sixty-three percent. Meanwhile, euthanasia has been reduced in Parramatta by ninety-eight percent and in Campbelltown by eighty-one percent. The year before we started keeping cats safe at home in Walgett in remote northwest New South Wales. The council impounded two hundred and seventy-four cats and all two hundred and seventy-four cats were euthanased. One year after our targeted desexing program started, Walgett impounded two cats and they were both successfully rehomed. This approach works, it works quickly, but it needs to be funded. Our second recommendation is to encourage voluntary cat containment. At RSPCA New South Wales, we recommend and encourage the containment of pet cats to their owner's property to keep them safe and to reduce impacts on wildlife. Our research through keeping cats safe at home demonstrates that the uptake of cat containment is increasing over time. And that this style of cat management is becoming a social norm and a community expectation. Programs like our successful keeping cats safe at home initiative take a human behaviour change approach. To encourage this continued shift to containment. We do not recommend mandating cat containment for multiple reasons, which we've outlined in detail in our submission. Our third recommendation is to reform the Companion Animals Act, mainly to clarify the role of councils in managing unowned cats. We recommend explicitly requiring councils to accept owned and unknown cats surrendered by members of the public. And to respond to requests for assistance from their community. Cats don't respect local government boundaries, so a unified approach between all New South Wales councils is essential for us to progress. And our fourth recommendation is that we invest in more humane and evidence-based methods of feral cat management. We welcome your questions and a broader discussion on these matters. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, and thank you. So did you have something else?
I'll just table those four different documents.
Oh, thank you. That'd be helpful.
There's copies there if you want to hand out. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. Um, I'll just throw a couple of questions in. Thank you again, um, for your time today. Um, you note in your submission that mandatory cat containment laws would likely lead to increased rates of abandonment. Surrender of cats due to financial reasons. Um, can you expand a little bit further on that? And, and what the impact is there, particularly on, on disadvantaged groups?
We're already seeing cats being abandoned at increased rates, uh, due to the cost of living. And the housing crisis, people having to move and not being able to cat, take their cats with them. That's happening all the time and those cats become unowned cats and they contribute to this unowned cat problem. So adding additional barriers on effective cat ownership just makes that problem worse. So we definitely suspect that cats will be surrendered by people who can't keep them anymore or cats will be abandoned where there aren't accessible surrender options.
Uh, there was recent changes to the rental laws. Um, which allow, for example, for a landlord to insist that a cat has to be kept outside. I mean, how, how would these balance? Would it mean that if someone was renting, their landlord says they can rent there, but they have to keep their cat outside? Um, and then all of a sudden there's this mandatory cat containment law. How does that sort of, how would that work? Would that mean that. RSPCA and councils and rescue groups would have even more cats being, uh, abandoned, I suppose.
Exactly. And that happens already where people will have to move and they can't find somewhere that will let them keep their cats. We have more than two hundred cats on our surrender waitlist right now. Um, people who, who can't keep their cats anymore and are trying to rehome them. So it's just gonna make it worse. And we're concerned about the equity issues that that creates, that different populations are gonna be affected by that change in different ways.
I think it also really clearly highlights the issue with having a, most laws being statewide or countrywide. And then putting in some LGA based laws. If you have got a law which says statewide, you can make a tenant keep an animal outside. Um, but then when LGA chooses to opt in for a contained policy, the two are not interacting or talking to each other and it creates a lot of problems and conflict. And it would absolutely increase the number of, uh, cats that are being brought in, seized by community and by rangers. Into, uh, the charities and pounds that are already overrun.
Do you have any sort of prediction rates in regards to what the increase in euthanasia would be if these, um, cat containment laws were to come in?
It's an interesting question because I think over the last few years has been increasing pressure on councils to reduce the euthanasia rates. And the unintended consequence that that has had is that councils just don't take the cats in anymore because they don't want to look bad to their communities. So I wouldn't be surprised if that continued and the ca, councils would just, uh, prefer to not act. Uh, prefer to not do any of the cat management activities so that they don't have to increase their euthanasia rates. But otherwise, I mean, we're already having trouble rehoming the really friendly, healthy, young, even the kittens are sitting in our shelters for. For months looking for homes. There just aren't the homes for all those cats. So if more cats are coming in. Um, then it's inevitable that the euthanasia rates are gonna go up.
Yeah. Um, and at the pound inquiry as well, we heard a lot about. Um, and particularly when we went out to regional pounds, we heard a lot of regional pounds having problems with having a lot of cats. Coming in that weren't microchipped, that weren't registered, but they were clearly a companion cat. This wasn't a wildcat living on the street. This was clearly someone's cat. They're very friendly. But even though we have laws around people microchipping and registering their cat, there's this recognition that a lot of people don't realise they have to do both. A lot of people, um, are avoiding the, the extra cost of doing that, for example, um, or just don't realise that they're supposed to do this. Um, how does that interact with a mandatory cat containment law? Uh, because we kept hearing at pounds that these animals were coming in, they couldn't actually locate the, the family of these animals. Um, what happens if suddenly there's a cat outside and they're not microchipped and registered?
I think like the other way of looking at cat containment, if it was brought in immediately from, you know, tomorrow, we've got cat containment and the councils were. Proactive in implementing and, and policing those laws, you'd be looking at hundreds of thousands of cats being euthanised. Um, you know, within a couple of months because there are so many cats that are passively owned. And for a person on a low income, if you've got a cat that starts, uh, coming by and you start feeding it regularly and you've got a bit of a connection with the cat. Um, to look at getting registration, desexing and a health check, um, at retail rates that are there, you're looking at seven or a hundred bucks, which if you're on minimum wage. You just can't not pay rent and not eat that way. This is not gonna happen. So, um, it's, it's a insurmountable barrier. For that person to take on all those costs and all of that, uh, pressure to do what they do intrinsically want to do. Rather than the opposite of policing and enforcing it is that method which will create bad outcomes. Encouraging it and, um, teaching people that they can access subsidized or free desexing. Get the registration done and then have that cat make it theirs, build that connection to the cat and then want to protect it from cars and other. Uh, problems in the, in the community, which will then also protect the environment.
Hmm. Uh, it sort of sounds like, you know, we've got, um, you know, we're still trying to build on animal friendly rental laws. We've got a veterinary shortage, um, pounds and rescue groups are over capacity. Um, you know, the pet registry is still being built and isn't fully functioning at the moment. Um, that there's all these other things sort of going on in this space. Would you say that based on what you've just said, Mr Wilkie, that we're not ready for a ca, cat containment laws in New South Wales?
Yeah, we definitely aren't. And that's why we've said, you know, if you were suddenly, if we'd gone from seventeen eighty-eight until now and not had cats come to Australia. We wouldn't be introducing the saying, let them roam free. It's an apex predator that breeds rapidly. That would be a really mind-woggling decision, but. We are in the dis, situation that we are currently in and to, uh, change that. Investing in targeted desexing programs like what Keeping Cats Have at Home offers is the absolute best outcome that helps the environment. Helps people who have got cats, protects animal welfare and is the most cost-effective. If you consider catching. And euthanising a huge volume of cats, it's gonna cost a fortune. I mean. The stats that Gemma was reading out just before are phenomenal and we're talking. I mean, the stats that Gemma was reading out just before are phenomenal and we're talking about a program that was two and a half million across four years and 11 LGAs. It's about 200 grand per council in four years. And that would cover like two ranges in one LGA for one year with benefits. So the amount of money you'd have to spend to do the cat containment overnight would be just phenomenal and have lots of really bad adverse outcomes versus the cheaper, more effective, proven method that we can implement from tomorrow.
And Dr Ma, I just want to ask you about the educational program that you run. It sounds like it's really effective. And I asked some questions this morning because it sounds like this educational campaign is working. It's actually encouraging people, it's changing those social norms, it's getting people to actually have their cats indoors. Whereas in states in Victoria, for example, in councils where they've got both the education and the punitive laws, we're still seeing these, you know, massive increases in euthanasia rates. We're still seeing it, you know, disproportionately affect disadvantaged communities. Can you talk a little bit more about the education program, how successful it is and what we need to do more to really sort of build on that program to get even more success?
Yeah, so we've worked with an expert in human behaviour change and human psychology, Dr Lynette MacLeod, to design our intervention and to do a whole bunch of social science research along with it. So we found that the main barrier for people keeping their cats contained was their psychological capability, so knowing how to do it and feeling confident to do it and persisting to make that change in behaviour. So what we focused on is just providing people with accessible information on how to successfully keep their cats contained, providing them with encouragement, creating a community of practice of cat caregivers who are keeping their cats at home, all that sort of thing. What we've found with our social science research, that we did some focus groups recently based on an ad campaign that we developed, and we've found that there's this huge pressure on cat caregivers who are allowing their cats to roam. They feel really victimised and demonised by their communities. They're kind of underground, they don't want to talk about it. They're very much, they've heard this message, they know everyone wants them to keep their cats contained. It doesn't necessarily mean they can do it with the cat they have now, which can be really difficult for people. So I think that highlights the need that if containment was gonna be mandated, it would have to be grandfathered. There are a whole bunch of cats that would not cope with that change. But also that the trend is, it's happening. If we keep that messaging going, we're heading in that direction. People are starting to do it. But we need to accompany it with the programs that make that easier, so making sure people aren't ending up with a cat by accident. People, if they're getting a pet cat, they've really thought it through. They've thought about, well, can I meet all its needs in contained home? Or maybe a cat's not the right pet for me. We don't want people who are just ending up with a cat on their doorstep and thinking, well, it needs somewhere to go. If it goes to the pound, it's gonna be killed. We want to prevent that from happening and that's where the targeted de-sexing has to go alongside the social marketing and the human behaviour change.
Thank you. Ms Abigail Boyd.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you very much for coming along and for the amazing program, the KCSAH program. I just wanted to drill down into this, you know, the Chair was asking about sort of what would happen if we put mandatory cat containment in place. Clearly, there are lots of different ways of implementing mandatory cat containment. And I agree with you when it comes to the equity aspects, when it comes to the enforcement of that. But we know that a lot of our laws are not so much about enforcement but about changing norms. If we were to acknowledge and embark on a, I guess, a plan of cat containment that had a mandatory cat containment law involved in it, but along with education and a whole bunch of other things, but did have a grandfathered approach so that it didn't apply to sort of older cats, but only applied to newly homed cats, et cetera, et cetera. Would you be as opposed to the concept of having it in the law? Or is there concern that it just wouldn't be implemented in the right way?
I think the latter is a really big concern and that's why I was saying, you know, there's a lot of things we can do for less cost at the start. It'll have a huge impact for all the outcomes we're trying to reach, from environmental to animal welfare to helping people that can't look after their cat. So, and animal welfare. So we can reach all those things for less cost and have a much bigger impact by funding that for a couple of years and then we can have a look at it and review it and see where we're up to. Whereas putting in a date where it comes into place, I think certainly would change the conversation around things in that human behaviour management part of things. But the campaigns we've had running have already been achieving that as well.
So I think, yeah, because I think the counter is and, you know, certainly one of the reasons, well, the main reason why the Greens have been so keen on cat containment is because of the impact on wildlife. And there's a view that if we just continue on in this kind of educational perspective, that it's not gonna be quick enough and that we need to be acting much quicker than that. If we were to put in cat containment laws that were also backed with that statewide education campaign, that had a de-sexing and microchipping campaign, had the grandfathering, and then also had, you know, a real sort of gentle approach to enforcement to begin with, would you still have the same opposition to the idea of it?
My thinking on this has changed a lot over the last four years that I've been working on Keeping Cats Safe at Home. And originally I did think, we're gonna have to change the legislation. We have to. That's the only way it's gonna happen. And my thinking has changed because one, changing the legislation is only one of a whole suite of behaviour change tools that you can use to shift human behaviour on this issue. It's only one and it's a very blunt one. And my big concern is it has these big equity issues. And I'll give you the example of where we've been working in Walgett, which is very low socio-economic community. It's also a community with a high proportion First Nations people. And that is the one area where we've been offering free cat de-sexing, free microchipping, the same as we've done in 11 councils across New South Wales. It's the one area where people choose not to microchip. Everywhere else, everyone's like, yes, please, free microchip, great. In Walgett, they don't want the microchips because they're scared that down the track, the council's gonna come and give them a fine for not registering. Because it's happened before. It's over policing happens. It's a matter of inequity in the way the law is applied and it has inequitable outcomes for that group of people. So when you say councils can choose or not choose to enforce the legislation, that leads down the path of potential inequality. So that's a concern for us. And the other concern with mandating containment at the moment is it will just create another really big barrier to us doing the interventions on unowned cat management. So at the moment already, the requirement to microchip, or the requirement to register and pay the annual permit fee for the cats not de-sexed before four months of age is a huge barrier for people participating in our programs. So they might be caring for 20 stray cats in their backyard and they've been doing that for a long time. They're really keen to see that situation resolved. But they're stray cats. They're not their cats. They're just doing a compassionate thing and feeding them. Very happy for them to be de-sexed and for them to have better welfare.
Yeah.
But then they have to have all of them registered. And so for one cat, that might be $150 to pay the registration fee and the annual permit fee. For 20 cats, that becomes very expensive for anybody, let alone someone who's living in a one-bedroom Housing Commission unit, who's on a disability pension, who's all the other things. So that's why adding an extra barrier of having to keep that cat contained as well just becomes insurmountable and people just can't participate, or they're breaking the law. So that's our, that's our big concern. It's just too early. There's too many other...
I really appreciate your point that we feel like we've been talking about education campaigns for a long time, but they've not been really funded. I mean, even Keeping Cats Safe at Home has achieved a lot in the short time it's been going for. So in those 11 LGAs, you have got momentous change happening within two years of it being really up and running. You could make that program statewide for like 25 million per year roughly, which when you think about the cost of building a pound, normally being 30 or 40 million dollars these days, it's not a huge cost and it would then have those same very quick and proven solutions getting delivered statewide. We could do that for a couple of years and see where we're at and then definitely would it lower our concerns. It would, is the short answer, but I'd rather do that funding first because it's what's always talked about and never coming through and law changes will happen once you pass them, so.
Can I, yeah, sorry. Can I just ask one last question and I'll hand over to my colleagues? Just this, on page nine, you talk about trapping and euthanasia and how that's proven ineffective because of the way that populations kind of, you know, will fill whatever the resources are available. Could you just talk through that point? Because I think it's one of the points of contention.
Yeah, I think there's only really been one study on that type of an intervention because no one does it because it's not in line with community expectations. But that study, they trapped and killed a whole bunch of cats and found that actually the population rebounded much quicker, the population was fitter and bred more effectively after you'd done that culling. The modeling shows that you need to do a really high rate of culling. You need to kill about 70% of the cats and you need to do that year on year for about 10 years or something before you start to get the population under control, which is just a huge amount of euthanasia. So, and logistically difficult to do. Cats are hard to catch. They don't always get into traps. Also, all these unowned cats, which is quite a big population of cats, they all have people who are looking after them. They usually have several people who are looking after them. And those people, once they get wind that people are trying to trap and kill them, they start to hide them and they start to sabotage your trapping attempts. Like, they'll let the cats out of traps. And once the cat's gone into a trap once, it's really hard to get them to go in again. So it just makes it really hard. We find that when we're doing the de-sexing programs. If we haven't got every single caregiver of those unowned cats on board with our program, they do, they sabotage, they let the cats out of the traps because they think, they're worried that the cats are gonna get hurt. So it's just, logistically, it's a really difficult way to manage the problem, especially when we've got better options.
Ms Higginson.
Thank you. Thank you very much and thank you, Dr Ma, for your in-depth and upfront experience with cats over years. I'm just curious, and my colleague touched on it around, you know, the RSPCA presenting a view that would say something should be out of the toolbox rather than saying, actually, we should have all tools. And I've noted that a bunch of other interest advocacy groups have sort of changed their position to saying, hey, actually, we should have localised programs. And I think your Walgett example is one of the really, really kind of stark examples of perhaps communities that are always going to have to have localised controls and provisions because of those equity issues which aren't gonna change over the next two years, for example. Do you think that actually if a local government area is saying, actually, we really want to be able to have controls now in the Local Government Act or in the, around companion animals, and they're actually calling on the state for that, that's something we should be able to do? And the example obviously is Tweed where you've got high biodiversity. It's literally an Australian biodiversity hotspot. You've got education programs that have been running and very successful, but you've got the people on the ground saying, if we just had some more controls, we could actually really start to control cat populations in our LGA. Would you support those provisions being enabled or enlivened on those kind of bases?
I do think what we have seen through Keeping Cats Safe at Home, that there are really diverse situations with cat management among different councils. And councils like the Northern Beaches, for example, Tweed, where they are relatively high socio-economic, they don't really have populations of unowned cats the way they do in other areas like Fairfield, like Canterbury Bankstown, where there are huge populations of unowned cats. Yeah, the situation is really different and it is more about containment of owned cats. So those councils might be at a point where legislation is the logical next behaviour change tool that you would use. I don't know how effective on a larger scale that's going to be across New South Wales if you allowed those councils to implement something that's different to everywhere else. But I think that is a valid point. And potentially that could be done in a different way than mandating containment through changing the Companion Animals Act to give councils more powers, to make more instances where a cat can be called a nuisance cat, for example. So making the offence that the cat's entering someone else's property rather than the offence being that the cat's left its own property, for example.
I just do think, yes, Tweed's a great example and I think that there might be some examples where you go, well, it probably would work here in that particular instance. But certainly where you've got, like, across Sydney, you've got one LGA who does it and one who doesn't. It's just absolutely not gonna work. It's gonna have some really bad outcomes, I think, overall. But there might be some instances where it can work. But I do also think that in general, most councils are not in a position where they've gotten to that last measure. And you said sort of removing a tool out of the toolbox. I'd say it's the least effective and most expensive tool. So it's the one you would leave to last, like, on any logical scale of how you go about tackling the issue. And if some council's already at that point, it might be a special application to look at that in the future. But I think that's very far and few between the councils are at that last resort point to really push onto it.
And do you think if, like, you know, you'd have, could have an indicator, like, if you were literally looking at a particular bird species, ground bird species that's literally looking at extinction, that might also be a case where you would say, actually, the balance here is tip. We need to do more and provide rules about cat containment to protect a local population of threatened species where cats are a key threatening process, that kind of thing? We, RSPCA would be open to embracing that kind of understanding?
Always open to looking at anything on a case-by-case basis so we can get down to the details of a hypothetical with the information and assess it then.
Because there are, obviously there are those communities that have made that decision and they have cat prohibitions and that sort of thing in their areas, like in the Tweed and some of those other high biodiversity regions, areas.
And there was an island, like the southeast coast of Australia, the federal government wanted to try and eradicate cats from. They were gonna spend like three or four million, ended up costing tens of millions, took a lot longer than they were going to. They got rid of the cats, the rat population surged and ate the birds anyway. So the birds they were trying to save died. So if you strongly intervene and radically try and change an environment, it's going to rebalance in different ways. So if we had cat containment just suddenly introduced in Sydney...
I'm sorry, I was suggesting you'd only do it on the basis of science, scientific evidence and expertise. Yeah.
And that's good background, so it's obviously where you're coming from. But I just think it's important to note for this inquiry's purpose that strong intervention has been tried before in Australia. It's been very expensive, taken a lot longer than they all thought it would at the start. And then it's had really adverse outcomes, including wiping out populations much faster than they already were because of other species that cats prey on, you know, repopulating more quickly. So I think evolution, not revolution in this space is the best way of going about it, both cost-effectively and for mitigating all of the different outcomes we're trying to get to, including the environment protection.
Okay. Dear Mr Peter Primrose?
Three things. One is, thank you very much for your evidence. It's very, very valuable. Thank you. Can I ask, within Australia, who do you think's doing cat management the best?
I think Dr Ma's program is doing it the best, honestly.
We've got some really good examples, like, for example, in Parramatta has been an outstanding turnaround. Walgett, Weddenshire, we're doing things really well in those individual councils at the moment, seeing really good impacts.
So are there any other states or local council areas in other states or territories you're aware of who are also doing a good job?
Jackie Rand's work in Queensland has shown some similar, really outstanding results. There've been some in Victoria that have tried similar approaches and also seen the effects in individual councils. Yeah, I think the evidence is starting to mount up that the targeted de-sexing approach is one that's very effective and it seems to be reliably consistent when you implement those programs. They work in a similar way.
We have some recommendations from local government New South Wales. I was wondering if I could ask you to take on notice, having a look at those as they relate to the Companion Animals Act and particular amendments that they're proposing? If you could just take on notice, have a look, and I think we'd welcome your comments on those and if you agree or disagree, what alternatives you may want to propose?
Yeah, we'd be very happy to. And we strongly welcome this government's commitment to review that act holistically. I think that'd be a really key part and it's a great opportunity to do that along with POKDA at the same time in this term. We could do some really tremendous things there.
Thank you.
Dear Mr Eileen McDonald?
Thank you. And thank you for your attendance today. I just, if I go to your recommendation six about prioritised research on humane methods of feral cat control, and if I just ask a question, can targeted de-sexing programs effectively reduce the feral cat population? effectively reduce the feral cat population without mandatory containment, and if so, how?
Feral cat populations, so populations of cats that have no relationship or dependence on people, so we're talking cats that are living kilometres out into the bush beyond people's properties and things, that is the one instance where lethal methods might be appropriate ways to manage the populations. But we think if that's going to happen, it should be done with, in methods that are humane or as humane as possible, um, and that they should be done in a way that is appropriately monitored and evaluated, so it actually works. Um, and, yeah, that it's, that it's evidence-based.
That also would be a last step, I think, because if you've got um, a, a population being culled, um, in a national park, um, and you've got a town nearby, they're going to have a feeding and a crossflow effect, so you, you, you wouldn't um, have a town where you're not implementing this sort of measure, we're talking about like a targeted desexing programme and be uh, running a culling programme because it's going to be a perpetual culling programme, which is not what anyone's wanting.
So, uh, I, we've, we've seen really, um, it's been really interesting doing these programmes out in the regional areas, like in Weddenshire, in Walgettshire, some parts of Shawhaven as well, where it's really clear that cats from those feral populations trickle onto rural properties, they trickle into rural towns, and that's continuous, it happens all the time because the cats are looking for food. Um, so you've got this really important interface between those two populations, the feral population and that unknown cat population. So you need really vigilant surveillance to monitor for when those cats come, as soon as they come and they're starting to get fed by people, that you desex them straight away. So that's where, that's where you need the really um, ready to go targeted desexing programmes uh, at that interface, I think that's really important. And on rural properties, so getting the, getting the landholders engaged and ready to notice the cats and to, to trap them straight away, get them desexed if they want to keep them around.
And then, so following on from that, how would you propose to balance, say, welfare considerations with environmental concerns? So where you've got um, populations of cats in a, as you described, um, yeah.
It's actually quite easy because the same intervention has both, both outcomes. So with these targeted desexing programmes, it decreases the cat population density, it's actually decreasing the population of cats, decreasing their environmental impact and improving their welfare and improving the welfare of the people who care about them. So it's a real one welfare approach.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, cut that off.
Oh, sorry, the, the honourable Bob, I might throw to you first, Bob, if that's all right, rather than, uh, thank you.
Just letting you know, Chair, I'll have one or two questions.
Yes, yes, I'm aware, thank you, Wes, that's why I thought I'll go through everyone that has questions first before I go back to people with further questions.
Thanks, Chair. Uh, just with respect to your targeted desexing programme, particularly the Keeping Cats Safe at Home programme, have you done any work to make an assessment of what proportion of an area's semi-owned or um, unowned cat populations would need to be sterilised in order to make a tangible dent um, into the wildlife impacts, accounting, accounting for, I suppose, you know, immigration that might come into that area, um, or birth rates, um, given they're, you know, prolific breeders, I suppose?
Yeah, there's been a few modelling studies that have looked at what intervention intensity that you need, so how many cats you need to desex in an area. Um, generally, it's recommended that you desex about seventy to eighty percent of the population in the area to start to control the population. Um, we're noticing that we need to do a much higher intervention intensity in regional areas than we do in urban areas because we have to account for that migration into the population from, from the bush. Um, so we need to desex about fifty cats per thousand population out in places like Walgett and Weden compared to doing about one to five cats per thousand population in the urban areas. Um, so the migration, migration into the area really stuffs up your intervention because it, it means you have to desex a whole lot more cats and it's less effective.
What influences the migration um, into the area?
Uh, so it can be abandonment of new cats, people who abandoned an owned cat, it can be just cats moving from one council area to another, um, I guess those are the main ones, um, cats moving around and in the regional areas, the cats migrating from the feral populations looking for food to, to where people live.
Is there a chance, I, I mean, the, the, the great goal is to convert semi-owned cats into owned cats, um, having had them sterilised. Um, is there a risk that if you achieve that goal, which is worthy, then there's sort of less competition over resources, which means you've got more cats coming into the, into an area, or?
Yeah, that's right.
Can you account for those things?
And our goal with these interventions, I mean, our ultimate goal is that we get all the cats off the street, that there are no cats living on the street without someone looking after them, that every cat is in a safe and a permanent home with someone who's going to take care of them, that's our goal. But you have to, uh, I guess the interventions are going to be much more effective if you're doing it across the whole area, so you don't have to deal with that constant migration. I mean, our goal is to ultimately close down those colonies of unknown cats, so there's, there's zero cats in those colonies anymore. Um, but you're right, we need to deal with the colony down the road to make sure that it doesn't just fill up again.
Um, just one more question from you, Chair, if that's okay. Um, just, just as a layperson looking at this, it, it just strikes me that it's very difficult to legislate using a sledgehammer approach um, to this issue. Um, and I note what you said about all approaches needing to take a, a sort of human um, uh, approach to, to cat management. Are you adverse to um, a less prescriptive approach to local governments? Giving them all the levers, I suppose, that you can apply with respect to cat management, but letting local government areas apply those levers that best suit um, the local populations? Because I note in your submission, you've sort of referenced that the biodiversity impacts can depend on a particular population, a particular area. Um, some areas like the Blue Mountains, for example, might require um, a more stringent um, uh, approach to cat management than other urban areas. Do, do you see the value in having a less prescriptive approach with respect to cat management?
I, I think so long as it's got a lot of checks and balances on the way, because if you suddenly make something which is an option for councils to do, um, and it's, that's the end of the conversation about it, um, it might get used in ways that are not particularly productive, um, both in terms of cost and in terms of outcome. So I think in our planning system, there are, I think a lot of people would say too many checks and balances, but you have to go through certain steps and prove the, the reason why you want to have a particular uplift or not have an uplift or protect heritage, all those sorts of things. We don't have any of those things in place for how councils use animal welfare protections and laws on their, their people and their animals. So I think if you were to put in a scheme like that where it is per LGA, you'd have to also introduce a lot of rigorous assessment to make sure that it's being used in ways which are genuinely towards the outcomes that you're talking about.
And I guess what we've seen in the way different councils currently interpret, the current legislation, they interpret it in very different ways, and we see that in them just doing nothing, um, not doing anything on cat management. So we'd like to see them at least consistently be required to accept surrendered cats, for example, because that can make a big difference when you're trying to, to close down a colony. If there are too many cats, sometimes they need somewhere to go. Um, but at the moment, a lot of councils will just say, sorry, we don't do cats, sorry, we don't accept surrenders, no, we don't, we don't respond to stray cats, uh, and that's a big problem for us at the moment.
So the latitude in it of itself is not the problem, it's just having a degree of oversight to make sure that, that it's being applied appropriately.
The honourable Wes Fang.
Thank you, Chair. Um, just in relation to the Keeping Cats Safe at Home programme, um, how is it currently funded?
It's been funded by the New South Wales Government through its Environmental Trust. It was a four-year grant project.
Okay, and um, who's doing the analysis on the success of the programme? Obviously, Dr Ma, you've um, produced uh, some papers on that matter, um, is it, is it independently verified as well?
Part of the grant budget is for an independent external evaluation, which is done by the trust, yes.
Okay, and um, how has that um, analysis, I guess, been undertaken so far? Is it, has it, has there been any um, de- development work, um, changes recommended in relation to the programme, or has it just been effectively a, a tick off to say that it's doing a great job?
I'm not sure how that process is run, I think it happens after the project, it hasn't happened yet.
Okay, so there hasn't been any um, quantitative analysis done of the project as yet?
Only our own research.
Oh, okay. Um, just uh, seeking, I guess, if there was a, a, a expansion of the programme, uh, Mr Wilkie, what would um, the RSPCA do in terms of uh, ensuring that the programme, if run by the RSPCA, wasn't beset by some of the issues that the POKDA inquiry from PC4 found in relation to the way that the RSPCA um, engages with the New South Wales Government?
Uh, any government grant that we get, we will use and acquit on the terms the state government outlines. So um, there have been rigorous assessments and acquittals for many of the grants that um, we've spoken about in different inquiries before, um, as there would be for this and as you would expect for any public funds, and we would welcome any um, government funding and any of the processes and acquittals and requirements that come with that.
Hmm, so you'd be aware, obviously, that inquiry um, referenced that there were concerns about the way the RSPCA were um, expending taxpayers' money. Um, can you uh, ensure us that there's not going to be similar issues if there was an expansion of the Keeping Cats Safe at Home programme?
Um, I'm, I'm very confident that that money and any future money um, has been and would be spent um, with absolute uh, cost effectiveness and to deliver the outcomes.
Okay, you know, I noted that you, in an earlier answer, you noted that there was uh, potential changes to the POKDA Act. Um, could you uh, outline for me what you expect uh, those changes might be and um...
Sorry, Mr, uh, sorry, the honourable Wes Fang, is this in relation to cats?
Well, I, I just noticed.
Uh, that's a very broad question, regards to what, what, what changes to POKDA.
We are, look, I appreciate that, um, I'm just sort of uh, looking to uh, get a, get a broader picture, but noting that we are short of time, I'm happy to uh, ask it another time, I'm sure I'll be on the next POKDA inquiry as well.
Wonderful, thank you. Um, I'm not sure if there's any questions taken on notice, but if there was, um, the secret, secretary will be in contact with you. Um, thank you again both for your time today and for all of your evidence, we really appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Very valuable, thank you.
Thank you.
Research papers we've hoped to table and forgot until just now, is it too late to just put those four on?
No, that's fine, that's fine, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, I now welcome um, our next witness. Um, could I begin by asking him to please state his name, position, title and swear either an oath or an affirmation?
Thank you, Chair, I'm Colin Soldier and I'm the policy leader of WISE. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you, and do you have an opening statement that you'd like to make?
I do, thank you. WISE welcomes the opportunity to further contribute to the inquiry into the management of cat populations in New South Wales. WISE is Australia's largest wildlife rescue organisation and we operate a dedicated wildlife rescue office assisting wildlife and the community across Australia twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, and we provide rescue advice and assistance for around a hundred and fifty thousand animals annually. WISE supports a welfare-based approach which improves outcomes for wildlife, the welfare of cats and those in the community who care about and for them. As the RSPCA has noted, roaming cats can face significant risks from cars, dogs, disease and getting lost, and those kept safely at home can live up to ten years longer. In all the discussions about the impact of cats on wildlife, it's important to note that habitat destruction and fragmentation is the key threatening process for wildlife. These are the leading causes for wildlife requiring rescue and rehabilitation. Cats are often a convenient uh, distraction from necessary actions to protect our unique and precious wildlife and improve welfare outcomes. We hope this inquiry will also focus on improving outcomes for wildlife, the wildlife rescue and rehabilitation sector and cats in our communities. Noting that cats do impact on wildlife, with uncontained house cats and free roaming cats in urban and peri-urban areas doing the most harm. As, as been mentioned earlier, in the committee, we are aware the impacts in uh, rural, uh, urban and peri-urban areas are thirty to fifty times higher than in uh, for cats living in the bush. So for cats, the impact on cats on wildlife, it's a relatively small percentage of animals that come into care. That said, it's still an unnecessary burden on the volunteer wildlife and rescue rehabilitation sector and the dedicated communities that we have, uh, dedicated volunteers that we have in communities. It's also important to note here that the critical contributions of the volunteer wildlife rescue and rehabilitation sector is at an avoided cost to government. In terms of the inquiry, the opportunities include small changes to legislation which can have significant benefits. And these are benefits for our unique and precious wildlife, for the welfare of cats and those in the community who care about and for them. These changes include supportive and education-based programmes focused on outcomes in communities, preventing additional births through indirect and direct financial support and assistance programmes, and these include subsidised accessible and mobile desexing services, trap disex, adopt or return and support programmes, restricting purposeful breeding and preventing the euthanise, euthanasia of healthy cats. WISE looks forward to the committee making welfare-based recommendations to government, leading to improved outcomes for our unique and precious wildlife, cats and those who care about and for them.
Thank you. Um, I might start by asking just a few questions myself, um, and in relation to your opening statement, you talked about a very small number of calls coming through to WISE in relation to harm caused by cats. Do you have a rough percentage as to say, how, how many of, what percentage of calls that is?
For the Greater Sydney area, we're talking around three percent of all calls are related to cats, and about half of that is the Sydney metropolitan area, the largest Sydney metro area.
Um, so it's quite a small percentage in total, and I, and in your opening statement, you said that there are much bigger risks to wildlife that we should be focusing on. What are those bigger risks to wildlife that should be a primary focus for government?
Well, as I mentioned, the key threats to wildlife are habitat destruction and fragmentation, and obviously that encompasses many, many things. So roads bisecting habitat, so that's a clear impact on connectivity is probably one of the largest threats in New South Wales, and other aspects of disease as a subset of that.
And would you say that there's a disproportionate focus on cats in relation to wildlife impacts compared to those other impacts like climate change and habitat destruction?
It would appear so because it's easy to go after something like cats, and it's technically an easier fix or an easier scene to be fixing rather than the larger and the complex problems, even though cats are a complex problem. Climate change, habitat destruction are much larger and more significant, but also complex problems.
Thank you. Um, your submission talked about um, WISE's support for things like wildlife and welfare-focused trap disex, adopt or return and support programmes. Um, and I like that sort of full title to actually explain what it is, what we're talking about, when you're talking about, um, you know, that continual support of these animals after they've been disexed. For the benefit of the committee, can you explain a bit about how those programmes work, um, and why WISE see that as such a big part of the solution?
The underlying principle of these programmes, as I think a lot of people talked about today, is reducing the number of cats in the community. And a key aspect of that is preventing additional births. So all desexing programmes are about preventing additional births. So the traps, uh, TIDAR's programmes are all about reducing additional births but providing support for those communities as they move towards a zero population. So they're a welfare-based approach about reducing cats in the community.
Thank you. Um, and just going into that a little bit further, because um, I know your submission sort of talks about quite a few different ways that we can reduce the number of homeless cats, reduce the number of cats more broadly. We know from the pound inquiry that there are too many cats and there are a lot of cats that don't have homes. Um, you argue in your submission about restricting... Um, you argue in your submission about restricting purposeful breeding of cats. Can you talk a little bit more about that?
Well, as we've seen with the example in Victoria, and I know Victoria's been cited for different reasons earlier, is that they've changed, made changes down there. So, uh, purposely bred cats cannot be sold in pet shops. We know that we have a crisis in the number of cats, the number of cats coming into, to council facilities. So what their program does is to try to reduce the number in those facilities by restricting purposeful breedings until arguably that there are no more cats in those facilities. So as long as there's cats in those facilities, there are, there are cats that need homes. So they're the ones that should be rehomed first rather than creating more cats.
Hmm. Um, and I think you also mentioned that you supported Victoria's model of converting pet shops into adoption centres. Um, can you talk about how that will, um, you know, support that homeless cat population more broadly and also help wildlife?
Well, it will help wildlife by reducing the number of cats living in communities and reducing additional births in communities. But in terms of more broadly improving the outcomes for wildlife, but also cats, it's those ones that are in these facilities and these high levels of unnecessary euthanasia for, for treatable and healthy cats are the ones that have been rehomed through existing facilities rather than creating more cats.
Thank you. Um, so what, it sounds like WISE's position here really is that, um, that cats aren't the biggest problem, but there are certainly some problems with, you know, the cat situation. Um, but your focus is on the most humane way of actually dealing with that so we can protect both species? Is that, would, would that be what you would say?
Well, most people who care about cats also care about wildlife and vice versa. So we, WISE has a welfare-focused approach for all animals, and we see this as the most welfare-centred approach.
Thank you. Um, the Honorable Peter Primrose?
I've asked this of a number of witnesses. So can I ask you, who, who's doing cat management the best in Australia, in your view?
Well, there, there are lots of examples, and there are other speakers who have already indicated this. And there's a lot of literature on this about what's being done well in Australia and being done well around the world. And I know that the RSPCA talked about their examples of keeping cats safe at home, and we have other speakers who'll talk about some of their programs. And that's something that they're much more well-versed to speak on than we are, so I'm happy to defer to them on that.
Okay, thank you. Um, given the sort of central nature of local government, um, I'm also asking people if they would take on notice, um, the recommendations from local government New South Wales in relation to amendments to the Companion Animals Act. So if I could ask you, please, if you would take on notice the recommendations that are made by LGNSW who want to amend, um, the act, um, if you would comment on those, please, and come back to us on notice. Thank you.
We will do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Honorable Eileen McDonald?
Thank you, um, Dr. Salter. I just wondered if in your submission, um, you mentioned about welfare-based approaches. Could you elaborate on the success of these in reducing euthanasia rates?
Well, euthanasia rates are directly linked to, you know, increased numbers of cats. So if you're having these programs where you're reducing the number of cats or reducing additional births, or that will directly have an impact on reducing the rates of euthanasia. And we, we see, you know, we've talked, we've heard a lot of people talk about equity in the community. And those who can't afford to have their cats de-sexed, that's where a significant number of additional births are coming from. And if those cats end up either abandoned or taken into facilities, given that we know that the number of cats are already in them, and the cost of living crisis we're having right now, many of those cats will be euthanised as well. So reducing those additional births will directly reduce the number of cats being potentially put in that situation.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Ms. Abigail Boyd?
Um, thank you, and thanks very much for coming along and for your submission. Um, I'm particularly interested in this, um, the recommendations around trap, de-sex, adopt, or return and support, the T-DARS programs, um, and the fact that in New South Wales we have, um, basically a legis, a legislative issue, um, with allowing that to happen. And I know I've spoken to a, a huge number of, um, of people who admit, um, to de-sexing, um, cats and, you know, releasing them back into the, uh, the community that they were, um, originally part of, uh, in the belief that that is an effective, um, way of managing the population. Can you just talk us through, um, sort of, I guess, the, the evidence basis for doing it that way?
Well, I'll, I'll start a little bit broader firstly. So as you mentioned, there are people who are doing this in the committee and then re-releasing cats. And technically, that's illegal under the current legislation. But within that, there, there can be a level of distrust for authorities. And to draw an analogy, we, in disaster situations, we have people putting their lives at risk to rescue wildlife because there's a distrust that the government agencies are, are not doing what they think is necessary. So there's a direct parallel there. So we see this happening across the board. But, and as the RSP sort of, as discussed, a high level of, uh, de-sexing within those cat colonies can bring down the population eventually towards zero. And so some of these cats, whether there's a distrust that they will, if they, they give it over to a council facility, they will be euthanised or not. So people won't hand them over to a facility. They prefer to, because they might not be rehomed, so they prefer to have them live in the community, live out their life in the community. But they're not, uh, contributing to those additional births. So that's where that population reduction comes from.
Are there other states in Australia that allow that release, or is it just New South Wales?
I'd have to take that one on notice.
Yeah, okay. Um, and you mentioned that this was something that Alex Greenwich actually tried to change back in 2000 and-
14.
14. Um, at that time, I guess, what was the, you know, is it, what was the objections to it? And, and have we got more evidence now that could back it up? Or sort of what's changed since, since then in the last 10 years?
Well, there's a lot more research come out to talk about the effectiveness of these programs. But in terms of why the bill didn't get up, I guess we'd have to ask Mr. Greenwich.
Yes.
And, and I'm sure members of your party were around at the time as well to know what some of those discussions were.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions from committee members? Yes, Sir Higginson?
Yeah, thank you. Just on the, um, on the evidentiary basis for the release-back programs, the idea that you would de-sex, um, are you able to comment on the assumption that, um, sorry, so from your evidence, I think what you're saying is people have done that because they want to see the cat live its life out and not be euthanised. That's the primary reason people do it. Um, okay, so how does, so what is the evidence around any claims? And I'm not saying I think you're, you make that claim in your submission, but what is, if there is a claim that that then helps wildlife, where, what's the evidence for that, this?
I wouldn't say it helps wildlife.
Okay, thank, I did, I was gonna say, I didn't think your submission made that claim. Others do, though.
So there, there is, and some people see it as well-founded distrust that if they surrender that animal, it's going to be euthanised.
Yeah.
So there's a welfare concern on people, and that's why they don't do that.
Understand.
We're trying to operate within the, the realm of realism here.
Yeah.
We know people are doing this, and they're going to continue to do this.
Mm-hmm.
So we need to increase supportive programs to support those people who care about cats in the community to reduce the impacts of those cats. So de-sexing reduces, over time, the population to reduce the impacts on wildlife. It doesn't necessarily have a direct impact on reducing the impacts on wildlife now.
Yeah.
The other alternative would be if we open up massive cat shelters for these cats they're going to, but we know that's a significant cost. There's a lot of layers to that as well. And whether they'd be buying for that in the community is a whole other question too.
Thank you. I understand. Thank you.
So, oh, so can I just ask a follow-up on, on, on that question? Um, because I think the argument in some of the other submissions is, once that cat is de-sexed, um, they can't have those litters. And I think, um, this morning we heard from the Cat Protection Society that she said that, you know, they could have two or three litters easily within a short space of time, and then that's four extra cats. And then, you know, so by de-sexing that one cat and stopping them from have, giving birth to 50 other kittens that then become cats, that that would potentially impact wildlife. Because then you've got one cat which would have a fairly minimal to almost no impact on wildlife compared to 50 cats where suddenly we are seeing an impact on wildlife. Does WISE recognise that there is that benefit to the wildlife?
So if we go back to that example from before, so if, I think they talked about 2,000 cats that had been de-sexed, that's about 10,000 cats, potential population reduction over that short period of time.
Huge.
So if we think of, these cats are already in the community, you can, I have people caring for them or not caring for them. And if people are caring for them and de-sexed them, that's reducing those additional births, which is having a significant reduction in the impacts on wildlife.
Yeah.
So that's where we're coming from.
So, but, but so the assumption, though, is that the cat stays in, it's because there, there's an underlying assumption that that cat will be maintained in the environment. I mean, if the cat's taken out of the environment rather than de-sexed, then you get a genuine impact on envi, on wildlife because you've taken the cat out. There's this assumption that, well, if you take that cat out, another one will occupy its space. Therefore, that's the apparent-
Well, we, we've heard evidence from that, that that movement of cats, that more cats, if you remove the cats, other cats can move in. Yeah. Whereas if you maintain and reduce that population over time, potentially there's less cats coming in from other sources, and you're not having those additional births as well.
So it's about the time scale then? I mean, I take, I take my colleague's point that, yeah, obviously, if you put the cat straight back in, then it's, it's able to prey on wildlife. Um, but if you are looking, if there is evidence that over time it reduces the population to actually put them back in, de-sexed, um, then that's going to have a greater impact on saving wildlife over the long run.
That's the basis of T-DARS programs is to reduce the popu, it's not a quick fix.
No.
I don't, I don't think anyone-
Stops a cat breeding, that's all.
But that's the whole basis of T-DARS programs is you reduce the population over time, ideally towards zero.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. The Honorable Bob Nambur?
Just one question from me. Um, in your submission, you, you go through a number of cat control approaches. Um, I just want to go to your recommendation number two, um, around encouraging and supporting local governments to develop their own companion animal management plans. Is that consistent, um, with your understanding of what happens in Victoria, where, where local governments, um, develop their own domestic animal management plans, um, which contain a range of programs and services and strategies that suit that particular local government area, as well as, um, mechanisms by which they evaluate the success of those programs and strategies? So effectively saying, um, are you supportive of a, less of a sledgehammer approach to this, but more a, you know, piecemeal, um, approach that allows latitude to local governments to do what they think is best for their areas?
I think it's best to start with where we want to be. So like T-DARS, you want to reduce the population towards zero, those are the programs. I think we want cat containment, and we have to work out how to get there in a way that is equitable and effective. And I know others have talked about that. And that will require specific variations at the local level. And we've, we've heard evidence from the RSPCA about sort of indigenous communities, how you're working differently in those communities, having more equity-based focuses in those suburbs. So for example, Northern Beach is, you know, a higher standard of living, there's less, uh, cats in the community. So each council will require a different approach and focus. And I think we have to root it in communities. So we know in communities, so people who, who have cats who can't afford to de-sex them, they will have a different trust of the, the local government agencies. But if those people who work for the local government know who those people are and work out and develop a relationship with them, that one that is based on trust, that's a much more effective approach than, uh, so one-size-fits-all sort of hammered-down approach.
So if, if Blue Mountains Council, for example, wanted a, wanted a, um, domestic animal management plan that had cat containment within that, whereas, say, the Inner West Council, it didn't suit them because it didn't suit their needs, there should be that sort of flexibility for councils to adopt programs and services that best suit their areas.
I think, and this is the challenge for, for the recommendations the committee's going to come up with, is where, where do you find the balance in having a big-picture idea, but working with local councils on what's going to be effective for them in consultation with their communities? Now, I, I think as long as they work with their communities, they can work out appropriate options at that local government level as part of that bigger picture idea of where we want to head towards.
Well, thank you so much, uh, for your time today, um, and for giving evidence. Um, I think there might have been some questions taken on notice, in which case the Secretary will be in contact with you about them. Um, and if the committee has further questions, um, we'll put them on notice too as well. But thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
Uh, the committee will now break, uh, for lunch until, uh, 1pm. Thank you. Thank you.
Welcome back to the inquiry into the management of the cat population in New South Wales. We now move to our next witnesses. I have one witness online, I believe we might be waiting for another witness, councillor Turley, to come on as well, but we might start with the witness that we do have. Could I begin by asking you to please state your name, position, title and swear either an oath or an affirmation, please?
Yes, good afternoon, my name is Susie Senadesi. I am the Strategy Manager for the Environment at Local Government, New South Wales.
Thank you.
I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. And councillor Senadesi or Miss Senadesi, do you have an opening statement that you would like to make to the inquiry?
Yes, I'll do that on behalf of councillor Turley, who'll join us if she's able, she's had an unexpected occurrence. So thank you Chair and committee members for the opportunity to appear before this inquiry today. As stated, I'm the Strategy Manager for the Environment Team, representing at Local Government in New South Wales, representing, which is the peak body representing New South Wales' general purpose councils and local government related entities. Cats are popular pets with an estimated 1.5 million pet cats in New South Wales, bringing companionship and joy to many individuals and households. However, cats, both feral and domestic, are highly skilled predators that kill millions of smaller native mammals, birds, reptiles and invertebrates each year. Roaming cats can also spread disease to other animals and can pose a disease risk to vulnerable community members. Managing our cat population is essential if we are to prevent further native animal extinctions and reduce the impact of cats on both the community and our environment. From local government's perspective, managing our cat population requires a holistic approach that includes statewide and targeted community education programmes on responsible pet ownership, transition to mandatory cat desexing laws to align with other jurisdictions and subsidised desexing programmes for cats statewide, amendments to the companion animal legislation to enable local governments to enforce the containment of pet cats in New South Wales, plus other amendments to clarify definitions and powers relating to cat management, legislative amendments to legalise trap neuter release as an option available for managing cats in certain circumstances, streamlining pet identification and registration into one process and funding and resources for councils to improve pound facilities and to manage and rehome cats. Councils are highly supportive of community education and responsible pet ownership programmes because they tackle the complex issue of cat management at the source. Education programmes that encourage cat desexing and reiterate the importance of keeping cats at home can help prevent unwanted litters and cat strain, which in turn reduces pressure on our wildlife and our pounds. For some time now, councils have been calling for amendments to the companion animal legislation to enable them to introduce and enforce cat containment policies should they resolve to do so. To support this work, councils are also seeking a three-year statewide grant programme to assist them to implement containment policies and responsible ownership programmes to increase desexing, identification and registration of cats. The effectiveness of efforts to manage the cat population in New South Wales will be influenced by the resources aimed at changing community culture and implementing the suite of legislative and on-ground measures that we've outlined. We urge the government to invest in the people, the systems and the laws needed to address challenges with managing our cat population. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't think we've got councillor Turley yet, but if she does come, I'll bring her in, but I'm afraid you've been thrown in the deep end for the moment. I'll just start with a couple of questions based on some of the submissions that we've received. And one of the concerns is that, you know, if the state government was to change the laws to give councils the options to implement mandatory cat containment, that there could then be pressure campaigns on councils and on councillors to actually enact those cat containment policies, despite the fact that possibly that there hasn't really been an understanding of how expensive they're going to be, you know, how much that's going to increase cat euthanasias, the problems that we're already seeing with overrun council pounds. How do we overcome these problems? And, you know, does, does local government, New South Wales, have concerns that councils could be pressured to bring in these cat containment policies while they don't have the funding and the resources and the ability to actually uphold them?
Certainly, that is certainly a consideration. The, I mean, I think as we have attested before, councils are all different. Some do have capacity to do cat containment earlier than others, and that's why we promote a voluntary, or, you know, that councils be able to introduce these policies as they see is appropriate in their LGA, factoring in things like resourcing. I guess the other point I would like to make is that we're not talking about cat containment and cat containment only. This, we do see this as a suite of measures that councils and the community, more widely as in government and owners etc can draw on, with desexing being a critical component, to actually reduce the cat population to start with, but that also comes hand in hand with the education and cat containment. And there's no, you know, it may be a case of a long transition period where the cat containment is known as the, you know, the end game, if you like, or the thing that we're trying to get to, where desexing and the education brings people along and with knowing that at the end of the day, that's what we're trying to get to, is that cats are contained, they're kept at home, safe and happy.
Yeah, and it's interesting because there does seem to be this unanimous agreement from every submission that I've read and every witness we've heard from, there's this really unanimous agreement around education and desexing, and then the contentious part and where people are split is around these sort of punitive cat containment laws. And you mentioned that some councils are resourced and may be ready to introduce these. I'm just wondering if you can give any information about which councils they are and whether they have the capacity on a pound level. I recently chaired an inquiry into the pound crisis, and what we heard was that across the entire state, every pound was way beyond capacity, that they were desperately struggling, that some of these pounds were relying on volunteers for food, for bedding, most of them weren't vaccinating or desexing. Some of the ones that were better resourced were able to do those very basics, but that we couldn't find any pound that said, yeah, we've got plenty of room for cat containment laws. And so, you know, obviously, when you think about it on a practical level, once a cat containment policy or law comes in, any roaming cat then needs to be collected by the council and then, I guess, taken to a council pound. So I'm just wondering which one of these pounds are resourced and ready to go to be able to actually take all those cats in, because that sort of doesn't marry with what we'd heard in the pound inquiry.
In terms of the council, well, pound capacity, that is the experience that I've heard as well, the information from councils, that they are very much stretched and don't necessarily have that capacity to take cats, additional cats at the moment. What I would say though is that the ability to introduce cat containment can be provided or enabled, if you like, but not commenced for some time. So again, it's that messaging that says, as a community, we expect owners to keep their cats at home and to contain them as best they can, and we're using these other measures to get to that point. So, yeah, I mean, councils would need additional resources to support them, to implement, to support that cat containment implementation.
Yeah. And would you say, you know, the RSPCA talked about their education programme and they talked, and they talked about how effective it's actually been, just education alone. And their summary from their report that they put out was that actually, the regulations, once you sort of put in, you know, punitive regulations, they found no effect of, like, no measurable reduction was what was actually in their report. Do you think that, given we're probably not ready for containment laws, I think you said that they can't really be commenced now, should we be focused more on that desexing and that education, and then, as the RSPCA sort of mentioned, you know, review that in two years to try to make sure that councils are resourced and able before we sort of enable those laws and sort of, you know, essentially threaten communities with it, maybe we need to sort of still focus on the parts that aren't in place yet? So I don't know if that was a very clear question, but there's a lot of sort of parts to it, but I hope that made sense.
Yeah, I think, as I said, the emphasis would be on having that power there. It is a complex, as others have said as well, very complex issue, and sometimes it's hard to know what element is impacting on what. So even though the Keeping Cats Safe at Home programme doing great work, it hasn't yet really been evaluated, it hasn't really had that period of time necessarily to understand what impact it's had versus other measures that might have been in play. So I think that it's important to have, as I said, to communicate to the community, cat containment is something that we want to get to. If councils do have the capacity, for whatever reason, to do, to implement that sooner than later, then we would certainly advocate for that and advocate for that capacity, or that facility to be available now, but that it may be, as I said, a transitional thing where there are other, you know, councils that might take a bit longer to implement it.
The other thing we heard this morning as well was that punitive cat containment policies can further disadvantaged, already disadvantaged communities. I know the RSPCA mentioned particular communities, we talked about, you know, the rental population, for example, we've just passed rental laws, for example, that allow a landlord to insist an animal has to, can be kept outside, and then how that would then conflict with sort of local government laws. The RSPCA sort of said it would be, that containment laws would severely disadvantage First Nations communities. What sort of considerations has local government, New South Wales, put into their sort of position on that and potentially disadvantaging certain communities?
I think, again, the focus needs to be on the outcome that we're seeking. It's not about councils wanting a law to enforce, it's about communicating the expectation to our community to say, where you can, you need to be, you know, contain, bring your animal inside or have it in an enclosure, recognising that there are community cats out there, that's where the, you know, desexing is a primary, you know, that's the primary tool that you would be aiming at. So it's, I think, as we've seen even in other states, that it is something that needs to be transitioned, and it's not about being punitive, it's about saying, this is our expectation and we want to see the community or owners, pet owners, moving towards that as part of their responsible pet ownership, responsible.
And do you think that that can be achieved through education alone, given that, you know, most of the research that I'm reading in the submissions is that where cat containment has been put in place, it hasn't actually been effective, it hasn't actually reduced the number of calls about free roaming cats, for example, or complaints, everything sort of seems to be remaining the same. I'm just wondering if that's needed or whether the focus really should be on education and desexing and some of these other aspects that you're talking about.
Look, I think that the other aspects are highly important, I don't think you can have cat containment without those other things, but the ability to, I guess, enforce cat containment is, will be very important where you don't have, you know, where you've done the education, you've sort of done the desexing, and you need, councils may need another tool essentially to say, okay, you know, we've gone through this process, that this cat's not been contained, because these potentially would be cats that might be contributing then to another colony or to the feral cat population, so it's just having that.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we need this tool if, if it's shown that it's not effective. I'm just sort of, I suppose there's, there's the other side of it where everything sort of, that I have read so far says that there's no evidence that it's effective, that it's achieving any change, and so are we then kind of putting something on councils that's going to cost a lot of money and potentially then putting that on rate payers or taxpayers to fund something when other organisations are saying, actually, it's not even effective? So I'm just wondering if there's, well, I guess I've got two last questions for you. If you can point me to any evidence that it is effective, and if we don't have any evidence that it's effective, why would we put that strategy forward, you know, potentially sort of creating a sense for the community they have to pay for this, because there's going to be a significant increase, obviously, to councils or to state government to run it? Why would ask taxpayers to fund a programme like this if there's no evidence that it will achieve what it's set out to achieve? Um, why we would ask taxpayers to fund a program like this if there's no evidence that it, it will achieve what it's set out to achieve?
I would have to take on notice, um, in terms of evidence, um, of the, you know, uh, cat containment on its own, um, making the, the, the change that you talked about. Um, I think it's important to remember, though, that, um, to look at the whole picture. So it depends on what other aspects were in play, um, where cat containment has been introduced. Um, or, or that weren't in play, for that matter. So, um, I, I agree that it's, um, you know, obviously, we need to be aware of, um, the implications for councils and for others of introducing these measures. Um, having said that, we're seeking for councils to have the ability to introduce cat containment, not for it to be mandated. So until it is introduced, there are essentially no costs to the consumers, to councils.
So there's no cost while there's no mandatory cat containment, is it?
Well, if it's not, i- if it's not, um, at the, introduced at the LGA level, then it's, it's a provision that's there for, available for councils to implement. If that's not being implemented at that point in time, then ostensibly, there's little to no cost. I, I can't see that.
Yeah, sorry, I only meant there would be a cost if it was actually, if cat containment was actually implemented. Yeah, just to clarify that. Um, the Honorable Peter Primrose, did you have questions?
Um, you make a number of recommendations, um, in relation to amendments required for the Companion Animals Act. And I'm just wondering if I could ask you, just in the time we have, to talk to one of those. And that's, that's your, your very first one about the definition of a cat being owned in terms of colony cats and what the problems that may arise, um, when discussing dissexing and registering, um, um, colony cats. Can you talk to that about the problems and how that might be overcome in a, and what the definition may need to change, um, too, please?
Um, as I understand it, uh, I, I guess the challenge with colony cats and, um, identifying an, an owner is, um, that, that owner then takes responsibility for that animal. Um, and, um, for, I guess, regulatory purposes and follow-up purposes, councils are looking for those, um, for cats to be ident, identified to a particular person or a particular legal entity, I guess, in, at the end of the day. Um, so I think, uh, being clear about how that works is, is what councils are seeking.
Yes, any, any suggestions about what amendment, the amendment might look like? And please feel free to take this on notice, because I'm, look, my, my experience from talking to rangers over a whole range of issues, um, particularly to do with motor vehicles and things, are that we can move really good legislation and then they get caught up in the most pedantic little issue that stops them from actually doing what we're asking them to do. And that's why it would seem to me that these types of, of issues may need to be clarified really carefully. So please feel free to take it on notice and, and come back to us with, I'm looking at some specifics about what you would change it to.
Okay, yes, I, I will take that one on notice, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Abigail Boyd?
Thank you. Um, just one quick one from me. Um, I just wanted to ask, I feel like we are all agreeing that, we're all agreeing on what the problem is, or agreeing that there needs to be, um, some form of cat containment and then there's a, a disagreement over how we get there. Um, when it comes to, I guess, what I would prefer to see is a broad plan set in place by the state government with then powers given to local councils to implement and to do, to make exceptions and all of the things that they need to do. But the benefit of having that statewide plan is that you get, um, the education program, you get consistent rules across the state, that sort of thing. Would you agree, do, do you, do you view that, I guess, LGNSW's position falls within that sort of broader plan? Or do you see it as being inconsistent with it?
Um, look, I think we, we support statewide community education program, um, and certainly, um, mandatory dissexing. Um, I think if there was a statewide cat containment, I'd probably, yeah, I, I don't think we have a formal position on whether it should be, sort of, there should be a statewide and a, a local. Um, but certainly the option to introduce it at a local level is something that we, we do advocate for and, and have had that message from, from councils. So, um, I think it would be potentially a little bit difficult to have, um, you could have the messaging at the statewide level around cat containment, but I, I'm not quite sure how it would work necessarily in the legal sense if you had a statewide and a local, um.
So I guess, for example, you, you know, you could say, all, all newly, um, newly acquired, newly homed cats or, or, you know, cats under a certain age, whatever you want to call it, they have to be, um, kept at home, say, 24 hours a day. Uh, whereas an older cat, you could have like a, you know, a nighttime curfew in place. Um, say that that was the statewide rule, but then how it got implemented by each council and when exemptions were made and how it got enforced were then sort of left at that sort of council level. Um, that's the sort of thing that we're talking about, if that's helpful?
Um, I, I just think that would probably be quite difficult to implement on the ground because, one, a lot of cats aren't actually even registered, um, and identified. So we don't really know, like, if a cat was, let's say, if, if a cat was picked up, um, knowing kind of its age would be quite diffi, difficult to do, uh, or to determine. Um, so I, yeah, I, I think that the concept of that transitioning or the, you know, I think earlier you talked about grandfathering, um, could be a useful one. It would just, I think it just might be a bit difficult based on the cat, cat's age or something like that.
Sure, but in, in terms of the, 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 the overall curfew rule applying statewide, so that the, the education piece can be there, so everybody knows what their obligations are regardless of which LGA you're in. But then the actual implementation and enforcement and the way that each council decides to put it in place could still differ. Um, I think there's a concern about having different local councils with different curfew rules and cats don't know where the LGA boundary is and people might get confused with the messaging?
Um, yes, that is, that is a challenge, um, most certainly. Um, that obviously cats not knowing the boundaries, um, sometimes people not knowing the boundaries, um, either. Um, and also, uh, I guess, another challenge could be, um, that, um, and I think, um, Ms. Hoss referred to it earlier, that the pressure on councils, you know, if, if Council A has implemented containment, uh, and Council B has not yet, um, that, that sort of, you know, either pressure on councils or that view of inequality could, um, could arise. So, um, I think it's something that needs to be carefully considered.
Thank you.
Ms. Alan McCall?
Uh, thank you. I was just wondering, you, you mentioned, um, mandatory, uh, dissexing programs. What kind of funding model would you, or what would, sorry, LGNSW propose for such a large-scale dissexing program? And how long would you propose that that be funded for?
Um, I don't have a, a specific figure in mind. Um, I think, um, I think our submission talked about a, a, um, uh, you know, in the order of nine or 10 million dollars, um, a grant program over three to four years with, um, but that, you know, also includes that education piece and, and some of the other aspects with, around registration and identification. Um, I think that would be a start. But again, I think as, as I heard this morning, you know, the costs of dissexing can add up quite quickly. Um, and so it's about, you know, uh, targeting that, that, uh, those, any, any funds towards that. Um, there are obviously funds that arise through the registration process of, of animals. Um, but they're already, um, I guess, far below what's needed to do the, the job that they've, that, that money's due to go towards. So, um, it would certainly, um, warrant, um, an additional funding injection, um, from the New South Wales Government, um, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Sweet time. Okay, great, wonderful. Thank you so much for your time today. Um, that wraps up our time with you. Um, I believe that there was some questions taken on notice. Um, so the committee secretary will be in contact with you about that. And there may be some further questions as well from the committee. Um, thank you, uh, again, for your evidence today. Um, and, um, the secretary will be in contact with you soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful. I now welcome, um, our next witnesses and thank them for their time to give evidence today. Um, we've got two witnesses in the room and one online, so I may start with our witness online and then start from my left and ask each witness to please state their name, position, title, and swear either an oath or an affirmation. Um, can I please start with, um, uh, Ms. Grayson?
Sure, thank you. Uh, so my name's Michelle Grayson, I'm the Cat Representative for Animal Care Australia and I will swear the affirmation. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you.
My name's Carrie Nadasdi, I'm the Assistant to the President for Animal Care Australia. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you.
I'm Dr. Jackie Rand, I'm Emeritus Professor of Companion Animal Health at the University of Queensland and I'm Executive Director and Chief Scientist for the Australian Pet Welfare Foundation. And I solemnly and sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Um, well, now move to opening statements. I'll just check if Animal Care Australia has a short opening statement that they'd like to make.
Uh, Michelle has it online.
Uh, Ms. Grayson?
So we, yep, so we, we do. Uh, so our opening statement, uh, is, uh, good afternoon. Uh, Chair, I ask that this statement be tabled and Carrie has copies, uh, to be handed over there in the room. I'm Michelle Grayson, the Animal Care Cat Representative and I'm joined by Carrie Nadasdi, the Assistant to the President of Animal Care Australia. Animal Care Australia represents keepers and breeders of pets and companion animals nationally and our goal is to promote and encourage high standards in all, in all interactions with animals in our care. Animal Care Australia questions the appropriateness of this, of the title of this inquiry and we believe that the focus of this inquiry is not about cat management, it is about the responsible ownership of cats in New South Wales. Whether that ownership be by pet care, by pet cat owners or by government of its policies, including responsible funding and not the cheapest funding. By necessity, this must include responsible data collection and reporting and most importantly, responsible education of the communities where the varying sets of cats exist that have different needs and how those different sets should be responsibly owned. Or of the community cats, working cats and stray cats, or of the humane, humane removal of feral cats. We need to define what exactly we're trying to manage. The simple answer is that there is not one definition and accordingly, there is not one answer. Animal care is animal welfare and we must all own that. What we don't need to do is bundle all cats into the same basket. They require, they each require different approaches with different policies, all aimed at interconnecting the one goal to do more to protect the welfare outcomes of all cats. In doing so, we will not only protect the cats but native wildlife and other animals as well. They all deserve that. We would like to thank the Chair and the Committee for inviting us to appear today and welcome your questions.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Rand, do you have an opening statement?
I do, and thank you very much for inviting me here. Over the last 17 years, I've been researching urban animal management and I've published 32 peer-reviewed articles, many of those related to management of cats in our cities, towns and around farm buildings. As you're aware, approximately one-third of cats entering shelters and pounds across New South Wales are euthanased every year, with the worst quartile of pounds that receive more than 50 cats a year, killing 67 to 100% of them. However, euthanasia rates of 2% to 3% are achievable if strategies are implemented that align with a one welfare approach to optimize the wellbeing of animals, humans and the environment. This will require a collaborative approach from state and local governments, welfare agencies, rescue groups and the community, driven by significant state government funding with contributions from many organizations. Just remember, killing healthy cats and kittens in shelters and pounds has a devastating effect on the mental health of veterinarians and staff involved. And we've now published a paper from New South Wales that shows cats being cared by, for, by community members that are killed have evidence of post-traumatic stress a year later. We all want the same thing, fewer free-roaming cats causing nuisance complaints and predating wildlife. We need to be approaching it from a one welfare perspective and understand the cause of the problem and therefore effective solutions. It's going to cost money, but eventually, we should be able to get the free-roaming cat problem largely resolved, if there's a will. However, if your goal is to increase cat-related complaints to local governments, increase cat impoundments, increase the number of healthy cats and kittens killed in pounds and shelters, increase the costs to pounds and shelters, increase exposure of staff to the mental health damage of killing cats and kittens and have no benefit in protecting wildlife, then, based on scientific evidence, I recommend you implement mandated 24-hour cat containment. Um, while it seems logical and compelling that mandated containment would reduce the number of free-roaming cats and associated issues, this assumption is not supported by evidence. So why isn't it effective? It's not effective because most free-roaming cats are strays with no owner to contain them. This is supported by your return-to-owner rates for cats in shelters, approximately 3%. So approximately 97% are not returned to owners. Most are stray cats fed by compassionate people who do not perceive themselves to be owner. Most not dissexed or microchipped. And even for cats with an owner, containment is often not achievable due to property limitations. And we've heard today about renters who cannot take the cat inside and lack of financial resources. Remember, over three-quarters of a million households in New South Wales, averaging 2.5 people, live on less than $800 a week. Many live in rental properties with poor fencing, no air conditioning, often no screens on the windows and doors. How do they afford two, it's $700 to $2,000 for a cat containment system? Mandated cat containment criminalizes cat ownership for low-income residents. Yarra Rangers in Victoria implemented mandated 24/7 containment and three years later, impoundments were still 68% higher than baseline. Casey implemented it and impoundments were still higher than the population growth 20 years later. But there are things you can do to decrease complaints, impoundments, costs, killing of healthy cats and kittens and protect wildlife. There's now good evidence that high-intensity free cat dissexing, microchipping and registration programs targeted to suburbs with high cat target to suburbs with high CAT-related complaints or impoundments works. You've heard about the successful RSPCA news programs, and now there's data from both Victoria and Queensland published in peer-reviewed literature documenting si- si- similar rapid changes. For example, in Banjul, Victoria, they decreased impoundments by sixty-six percent, numbers killed by eighty-two percent, and CAT-related complaints by thirty-six percent. We've just now published a paper showing a sixty percent decrease in CAT intake, eighty-five percent reduction in euthanasia, thirty-nine percent decrease in complaints, and based on camera trap data which we haven't published yet, we're showing a significant decrease in free-roaming cats. Dr. Gemma Ma reported that sixty-five percent of CAT owners in New South Wales contain their cats twenty-four-seven, and twenty-eight percent at night. Therefore, ninety-three percent contain some of the time. So based on this, spending large sums of money on broad-scale education will have minimal return on your investment. It needs to be targeted and help those people who most need help. So cats can be, in most cases, successfully contained at night if you tell people about bedtime feeding. It costs nothing. You feed the cat before you go to bed and close the windows and doors. If you care about wildlife, stop kittens being born through targeted CAT de-sexing programs. And also, engage your citizen scientists to provide data on native wildlife in New, in New South Wales. Where there are threatened endangered species that are identified, then implement micro-targeted strategies to protect them. For example, exclusion fencing and assisting CAT owners with building fences. So in summary, for New South Wales to implement effective domestic CAT management that improves the well-being of animals, people, and their environments, and protect wildlife, key policies and strategies need to be implemented. Our recommended strategies are, one, implement evidence-based legal definitions of cats as recommended by the RSPCA. Two, support high-intensity de-sexing and micro-chipping initiatives targeted to areas with the highest CAT-related calls to councils or impound, impoundments to stop kittens being born. Three, reduce obstacles to adoption by removing CAT registration, permits for excess cats and breeder permits, and encourage people caring for cats to take ownership. And four, shift to a one-welfare approach to CAT management, which benefits human and animal welfare and the environment, by encouraging a Pets for Life approach, helping people keep their cats, and offering practical advice on containment like bedtime feeding, instead of implementing restrictive and discriminatory mandatory measures. Where necessary, use anti-nuance and animal welfare legislation to reduce issues rather than compliance-driven methods for CAT management, such as mandated containment. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I might start with a few questions, uh, myself. I might start with, uh, Dr. Rand. Um, what happened in other states such as Victoria where CAT containment laws, um, have been introduced by certain councils? Have you had a look at the effects there?
Um, and as I mentioned in my address, uh, as far as I'm aware, there is no published paper, which in peer-reviewed literature, which actually documents it works. Uh, the data we're getting from numerous sites says that it increases complaints because people now have an expectation not to see a wandering cat. So they call up the council and say, "There's a wandering cat." And so the council is then expected to provide, you know, some sort of support for that. And in Victoria and in Queensland, it's typically hiring out a trap cage. So more cats are impounded, the more cats you take in, the more you kill. And we're not killing enough to reduce the CAT population. We have published that we're killing about seven to nine percent of the free-roaming CAT population. Research, modeling research shows you have to kill forty to sixty percent every six months. It's so expensive, and the killing is, who's going to do the killing? So that's why we're not getting control with these sort of typical management that we've been doing for the last three decades.
And I know-
Could I add to that before you move on? The other thing that's a problem in Victoria is that they've introduced statewide animal-keeping cats. So you're not allowed to keep more than two cats. So what's the incentive to register your extra, extra cats? You're not allowed to have them. So then when they get impounded, you, you're afraid to go collect your cat because you're going to be fined, you don't, they might come check how many other cats you have. So the government's actually set up a disincentive for pet ownership. It's a disincentive for responsible pet ownership, and it just kills more cats unnecessarily. So it's not even about the containment, it's that there are these statewide policies that are anti-pet-keeping, and that is the problem.
Yeah, that, that doesn't, I don't like that at all. Um, Dr. Rand, uh, just going back to, you know, we talked about Victoria, um, but I also understand many states in the United States tried to introduce CAT containment, but then have repealed those laws. Um, can you tell us why they ended up repealing CAT containment laws?
That's correct. They're called leash laws in North America, but they've recognized that most of the free-roaming cats are not identified. There's no one they can prosecute, and so it just is not a, uh, effective solution in reducing free-roaming cats.
And, and, and in, so I say in New South Wales, uh, there's been an argument put up today that, "Well, let's just let councils decide if they want to do these anyway," um, rather than the state sort of saying, "No, councils can't do this." Um, do you think that, though, as, you know, as, as part of this committee and as the state, um, you know, representatives, that we really do need to consider the impact where councils do potentially put CAT containment laws in, um, who that will affect and how it will affect them before we sort of open up for a free-for-all and say, "Well, if you want to do it, it's up to you"?
Absolutely. And, you know, it's based on a lack of understanding of the causes. And also, uh, you're typically, when they bring a mandate in like that, local governments have a simple survey, um, of residents, you know, "Do you support it, do you not", without informing them about underlying, um, causes. And so where many councils in New South Wales don't actively do CAT management, if they bring it in, who's going to take the cats? You know, the RSPCA now takes, you know, far more than their share of cats, and you, you know, the more cats you take in, the more you kill because they're just, they do not have the resources. So it is just going to lead to more cats coming in, and councils where they are doing their own work, it's going to increase the number that are coming in and that they're going to have to kill. And remember, there is a shortage of veterinarians, and veterinarians, in most cases, are the ones that kill them. And there's quotes that said, "You know, I've seen so many people's lives damaged by having to kill a never-ending stream of kittens and cats," and that was a shelter, uh, shelter veterinarian.
And I think you've gone into my, my next question there, and I want to sort of open it up to, to all of you. Um, as we do have a vet shortage in, in New South Wales, and in fact, we just did an inquiry into the veterinary shortage and the impacts of that. Um, as you say, you know, the evidence is that where CAT containment laws have come in, euthanasia has spiked. One other issue that we have in New South Wales is that a lot of these council pounds don't have access to any vets, and so they have to find other methods to kill these animals, such as shooting animals. Um, what does that mean for the pounds? And what does that also mean for the people that are actually tasked to kill those animals? I know we heard from, um, the AVA and the Veterinary Shortage Inquiry that it was a major stressor and that vets have one of the highest suicide rate of any profession. Um, it, you know, what sort of flow-on impact would these sort of laws have, particularly in these regional rural areas that don't even have access to vets? And I want to open that to both of you.
And often it's the veterinary, veterinary practice in a small country town that is tasked with killing them. And I know it causes a lot of tension within staff, and they've lost staff when they've been doing council work. They're getting in more cats than they can rehome. Remember, a lot of, uh, well, small, uh, country, rural areas are lower socio-economic. They're less well-serviced by veterinarians, and it's devastating. Can you imagine if you get a healthy lid of kittens, there's no way you can rehome them, and you're asked to euthanize them? It's that moral conflict about why you became a veterinarian and what you're asked to do. But there are solutions, and we do need a lot more capacity for de-sexing. And one of the things that's been shown, uh, to improve resilience of veterinarians is for them to graduate with really good day-one skills, and particularly surgery skills. And so you have the opportunity to fund high-volume de-sexing training at your universities. And there's a new campus, uh, was it Southern Cross University, uh, in Lismore that's been built. And they, their mandate is to develop more resilient students with day-one skills. And so training them in these high-volume techniques where they can de-sex fifty cats in a day is what's needed. And then they will have the skills that will help them make them more resilient. Because if you can do that sort of surgery, then you can cope with lots of other surgeries. So I would really urge you to fund those sorts of initiatives as well. Um, and it's a multi-pronged approach. No one thing in no one area, uh, it's going to work. It's the whole collaboration with veterinarians, local governments, rescue groups, the welfare agencies, and state government.
Can, can I add to that with, um, we agree with what, um, Dr. Rand is saying. Um, we really need to reassess how we're funding all of these different programs. So one of the things, um, I just found out, my council is involved in the RSPCA program, um, that you're talking about this morning, the Keeping Cats Safe at Home. I'm involved in this space. I didn't know. There was no outreach. There was no emails sent. Um, it's, all it is, is a page on their website that says, "Here's a pretty downloadable PDF from RSPCA, and here's a video you can watch." That's the resource. That's what you spent two and a half million dollars on. So these programs have got to actually meet the community. If you want the community to be involved, and you want especially stray cat owners and community cat owners to be involved, you have to not wait for them to come to you. You have to go out to them. Because if I didn't look on the website, I wouldn't have even known. And I'm in this space. I should know. You know what I mean? So when we're funding two and a half million dollars for some marketing and saying, "Well, this is really successful because we're educating the public," this information's already out there. We need to actually get the information to the people that need it. People in, looking after community cats are often scared to take the cats to the vet because then they're forced to microchip, they live in apartments, they're not allowed to take the cat home, they can't take responsibility for the pet. The laws we have have made it harder for them to actually be good, responsible pet owners. And we have to make it easier, and we need to get that funding out to outreach and actually reaching the communities. And what you were saying earlier, um, you know, how do we actually get these cats de-sexed and people are interfering with traps? You have to actually communicate with them. And it's not hard. It doesn't cost two and a half million dollars. It just doesn't. It's really cheap. It's really easy. The people in the communities know who the people are. It's just doing that community outreach and saying, "Here, we're going to actually help you with the cats. We're going to vet-check your cats. We're going to get them de-sexed." They'd be overjoyed. We need to actually invest these funds once, do it properly, set up the systems. We've got twenty years of neglect of these animals to reverse. It's gonna be an investment. You can't help that.
Yeah, and I, um, uh, absolutely endorse that, and we're working with boots on the ground in the community. And some of the most problematic sites, uh, those overwhelmed people, they don't have it, they can't afford internet. They mightn't even have a mobile phone. They don't have a car. And they can't afford de-sexing. Um, and I have to say, the registration costs in New South Wales are just a barrier. Um, and I'm not sure whether you're aware, but, uh, lifetime registration costs sixty-nine dollars. And if you register the cat and it was not de-sexed at four months of age, you have to pay ninety-six dollars, even if you didn't acquire the cat before four months of age. You know, just get rid of those barriers. Excess CAT permits as well. Use your nuisance laws and your welfare laws to address where their problem areas are. Um, but just make it easy for people to adopt those semi-owned cats.
And I just want to jump in as well in regards to, you talked a little bit about de-sexing. Um, and, you know, we've talked a lot about the cost of CAT containment, and then obviously there's a cost of, of a big de-sexing program as well. Can you talk a little bit about the cost difference between investing in CAT de-sexing programs versus investing in the enforcement of CAT containment? Which is more cost-effective and which will be more effective at protecting cats and protecting wildlife in the long run?
Well, the evidence is that, uh, what is effective is highly targeted and micro-targeted to the problem areas, free de-sexing. There's no evidence in a peer-reviewed journal from Australia that supports that mandated containment and enforcement is effective. It just increases costs. It increases killing, and we're not killing enough of them to protect wildlife.
Um, and so, you know, I guess when you look at the cost effectiveness of CAT de-sexing, because one is ineffective, your, your argument is saying that, well, there's only one that's effective.
We have to stop kittens being born. Um, and, you know, the reality is, if you walk around these suburbs where there's high, you know, maybe forty, fifty percent of the people are in rental properties, and walk around and see how many of those properties, you know, could contain a cat effectively, and even with good containment, cats escape. The research we've just published showed that of people who contain their cats twenty-four-seven, five percent of those cats escaped off their property in the last two weeks. And other research shows that forty-one percent of cats that were lost, the owners described as indoor-only. So cats are difficult to contain. You can't compare them with dogs. And if you're in a rental property, you've got kids going in and outside, you know, none of them have cat-proof fencing. And you can have a really nice, one of my colleagues had a six-thousand-dollar CAT containment system, and a cat still escaped. You know, that's the reality.
Yeah. We also need to be really careful how we word these things, because I heard mention earlier, I think it might have been, um, Ms. Higginson, um, about saying we should have mandatory twenty-four-hour containment. But if you legislate that, that means you're no longer allowed to take your cat to the vet because you've removed it from the house.
I would never have said that.
Oh, sorry. It sounded, it might not have been you.
No, no, I don't think anybody would have said it.
Somebody said the term, somebody said the term, twenty-four-hour mandatory containment.
I think it's a wonderful idea. People in my area do it all the time.
Yeah, absolutely.
Take the cats out on leads and, yeah.
And that's what I want to say, because I heard the term earlier, and I wasn't sure who said it, but, um-
No one meant that.
You know, anyone saying, like, mandatory containment, you, you just have to be careful that you're, you're making sure that, yeah, cats that are on leads can go out on leads. There's no reason they shouldn't be treated like any other pets or like dogs and be allowed to go in their community. And especially cats in apartments, just for their own mental health, they need to be allowed to go outside and sniff the, the flowers and things. And they should be allowed to do that on leashes and, and supervised and responsibly with responsible owners. So we just need to make that easier. So, sorry, Miss Quoie.
I, I just want to slightly chat, because we've talked a lot about cats and CAT containment. I just want to ask, uh, Dr. Rand, if your research has also looked at the impact of cats on wildlife. Um, we heard from wires this morning that only three percent of their calls were around cats. Um, and that, um, actually, that they suggest that, um, there are actually far bigger impacts on wildlife than cats, and that it's been sort of exaggerated. What has your, has your research looked into this, and what has it found?
Um, well, if you just look on the New South Wales Wildlife Rehabilitation Dashboard, you can get the answer to that. So I just looked up here, um, in twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, when they last reported, um, of species that were threatened, endangered, that needed rescuing, four-hundred-and-eighty-four were because of loss of su- suitable habitat, three-hundred-and-ten for car accidents, a hundred-and-nine collisions with windows, ninety-eight dog attacks, and thirty-seven from cat attacks. I think that probably answers your question.
Thank you. Um, so would you agree then the focus on cats, um, has been overblown? And that the evidence doesn't seem to sort of match up that that should be what we're focused on to protect wildlife?
The demonizing of cats is really distracting for strategies that will protect our wildlife. It is leading to cruelty. And, uh, as we've heard from wires, it is habitat destruction. Um, but it's very good to blame something, uh, cats, where, uh, our research shows, actually, when we asked people how strongly do you agree or disagree with these statements, "I like dogs. I like native birds. I like, um, native animals. I like cats." And it was, like, approximately seventy percen- seventy-five percent agreed or strongly agreed they liked dogs and wildlife, and only forty percent liked cats. So we, and that's very different from overseas. We've really demonized cats. Um, and actually, if you look at who is destroying wildlife, it's us.
We also need to remember that we've had over ten thousand years of us evolving alongside cats. Wherever there's people, wherever there's large cities, there are cats.
Not in this country. Only two-hundred-
Not in this country, only two hundred years in this country.
As humans, I mean as humans, not as Australia, um, humans and cats. And they've come with us here, because they came on, there were cats on the first fleet, they came with us. So we, we need to accept that this is something that goes along with humans as well. And if we remove all the cats from urban areas, then the government needs to come up with some sort of massive rodent and cockroach control that's going to replace the work that these cats are doing that we just don't see right now. I'm not sure if there is any research on how much rodents and cockroaches they keep under control.
Well, um, uh, we're just about to publish a paper and it will be picked up by the conversation. Um, and it's titled Feline Farm Hands: The Value of Working Cats to Dairy Farmers: A Case for Tax Deductibility. And the, and the reality is, we brought cats with us for rodent control. Because back in, you know, three hundred years ago, we didn't have rodent baits like we have now, but the dairy farmers are telling us the cats save them thousands of dollars every year in costs for repairing wiring in the dairy that the rodents have chewed through. And you can imagine if you've got three hundred dairy cows waiting to be milked, and your, your dairy stops working, and you've got to get a technician in from a fairly remote area, it's complex wiring, takes time to find it, that's a welfare issue for the, for the, the, uh, cows. And the dairy farmers tell us that cats are better than baits, and they've got concern about baits for their children, for their working dogs, for wildlife, and cats work twenty-four seven. Um, so they actually value them, but it, we need to help farmers get their cat populations under control, and that's going to require state and potentially federal government funding. And then if they were made tax deductible as working animals after that, they can probably keep the, um, keep it under control. But, uh, that's just a little side.
Um, I, I've got one more question, um, before I throw to others. Um, we've heard a lot, and we've got a lot of evidence that, um, you know, and, and I guess I want to go back a little bit to this whole idea of just let councils kind of do whatever they want. Um, there's a concern that keeps being brought up around the fact that cat containment laws, um, unfairly affect disadvantaged communities. Um, and I wanted to get your perspective on that and how it will affect disadvantaged communities, um, and whether that's another reason why, uh, your recommendation would be against allowing councils to, to simply introduce cat containment laws at any point in time.
And absolutely, and, look, it, it's just lack of understanding of the cause of the problem. If you look at where our free-roaming cats are, they're low socioeconomic areas. And it's convenient, you know, councils are being pushed to do something, and we've had this demonization of cats, uh, and there is a, uh, federal government, uh, policy of, uh, getting a social license to manage cats, and that's in the Threat Abatement Plan. Um, and so it's about, um, you know, getting a social license to effectively, uh, use lethal means for feral cats and, uh, mandated containment. So c- communities are pushing councils to do something because they've heard how devastating cats are on native wildlife, but they're not being told, well, it's actually humans dropping down trees and clear-felling new housing estates. Um, and so it seems like the simple solution, we've done something that a council's doing, but it is, you know, we've heard about how, you know, three-quarters of a million of New South Wales households living below, you know, living, they're a low income. How do they afford cat containment? Rental properties don't have adequate fencing. So it really is, it just criminalizes cat ownership for low-income people.
And sorry, I've just come across one more question, because I just, I realized that this morning, um, a position was put up that, um, pet cats kill a hundred and ten, um, animals a year or wildlife a year. I mean, where are these figures coming from? And if you disagree with them, can you explain why?
Um, they were from, um, uh, you know, the, uh, it was research published, they're theoretical calculations, uh, a lot of it is old data, and it wasn't meant, it, it was used in a way where it extrapolated the proportion of, uh, native species that were killed, which is good, to all pet cats, whether they were contained inside or not. And you heard Sarah Legg stating twenty-seven percent of cats were contained. The recent contemporary evidence doesn't show that from New South Wales, that a lot more are being contained. And if you actually look at the population studies, there is not a popu- a well-conducted population study in Australia that demonstrates a population effect of cats and on native animals, so birds or mammals. And in fact, there was a nice study from Perth, Western Australia, where they looked at, uh, postcodes or suburbs that had three different types of, uh, cat regula- regulations. One, it was ecologically friendly, you couldn't have a cat. Another one, the cats had to be inside at night and wear a bell during the day. And the other one, you could do what you liked with your cats. And they'd had those regulations for more than ten years, and there was no difference in the mammal species in the adjacent bushland. And in fact, in the area that you could do what you liked with the cat, there was more of the antikinus, which is a, a small mammal that's very susceptible to cat pupil- cat predation, where you could do what you liked. But the vegetation was a bit denser, and they concluded there wasn't evidence for cats having a negative effect on the population, but it was habitat quality. There was another study about pisserine birds, same sort of thing. It was no evidence of an association between cats and native wildlife, but a strong negative association between housing density, distance from bushland, and decreasing size of bushland. So it's us.
Hmm, we definitely need more research, it's hard to say yes, it's correct or no, it's not correct. And we don't have the data, we just don't, there's like a handful of studies, and it's not sufficient. Um, but going back to what you asked about councils, um, one of the things we haven't addressed yet is that we're looking at different populations of cats. You've got your feral cats, you've got your community cats, stray cats, and you've got your owned cats that are mostly contained. So they're, like, and also, um, responsible pet owners are already containing their cats anyway. It's, it's pretty much become a societal norm that you keep your cats indoors, it's quite a bit of stigma if you don't, um, and it's usually those community cats that are outdoors. So they're different populations of cats and they need different solutions. They're also in different areas. So when you say, well, should councils do what they want? Yes and no. We need local solutions, they need support to implement local solutions that are appropriate for the populations of cats that are in that area, because one size does not fit all, because they're not all cats. Um, you know, a feral cat cannot be compared to a Persian sleeping on someone's bed all day. Um, they just need different resources. The other side of it, though, is that you can't give councils, can't bl- can't, uh, can't even speak, whatever they want to do all the time, because then we end up with these pet limits, which some of the councils have already been introducing over the last couple of years where they're copying Victorian legislation and saying you can't own more than two cats and you can't own more than two dogs. And there is no reason to have that. It's adding to the pound problem, it's adding to welfare issues, it's adding to not registering cats, not, not, um, microchipping them because people don't want to get caught having more cats, and they do have more cats than they're supposed to, because councils are bringing this in. They're bringing it in, they don't tell anybody as well. So then your cat, pets get impounded and you didn't even know these laws existed because there's no outreach. So we can't let councils just make up any rules they want to. My council introduced a, um, it didn't end up going through, but they brought in an amendment that they wanted to, any cat that was found on the street that wasn't contained, wasn't microchipped, would be immediately euthanized. No waiting period, no going to the pound first, that's what they wanted to introduce. And rightly so, there was a big community backlash, we're in a, a bush area as well, so there's a lot of strong feelings about cats, but that was excessive. And councils should not have that power, that's just excessive. So we need to have some guidelines that are reasonable, we need to actually outline the different communities of cats and what's appropriate to manage those cats and what isn't. Otherwise, ca- councils just go nuts. So we have to manage that, some of them are doing it great and some of them are not.
Thank you. Are there any more Peter Primrose?
Uh, hopefully a simple one. Firstly, just to say how valuable I think your evidence is. I'm very valuable, because it's based upon evidence, and that's, that's incredibly useful. Um, you've touched on this point already, and we have, um, a submission from local government New South Wales. Um, they make a number of recommendations in relation to amendments that they'd like to see to the Companion Animals Act. And I was just wondering if you could please take that on notice and just give us comments back in relation to your views on the recommendations that they're making on behalf of local councils.
I'd be really happy to do that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Further questions? I've, I've got more, but I can say.
Yeah, thanks so much, thank you very much for your evidence. Um, I'm just curious about the, um, um, I don't think there's any dispute that humans are the problem when it comes to all things, not just wildlife. Um, and that, um, um, there are a bunch of reasons wildlife are in massive, wildlife is in massive trouble. Um, but do you, so you, is your evidence that you're disputing the science around the estimation of how many native animals are killed each year by cats?
Um, yes, and we're working on a paper, uh, which, uh, will do that. But in the end, it's about populations. What people don't realize, that of the, the birds that are the size that would be predated by cats, they've got a lifespan of between two and four years. So that means, on average, about thirty percent of the population are turning over every year from a variety of things, disease, old age, predation, flying into cars. Um, and research from both France and the UK, two different publications, use two different measures of bird health. And they both reported that birds killed by cats were significantly less healthy than those killed by flying into cars or to windows. And they concluded that cats actually take out the sick, the injured predominantly, that are not going to go on to the next breeding season. And so it's, it's more of a, that they're not having, that's, that's one explanation.
Thank you. So, but in Australia.
Yep.
Where we have incredibly different biodiversity to France or anywhere, um, in the northern hemisphere, um, would you think that, um, that the New South Wales Scientific Committee final determinations around the key threatening processes on a bunch of threatened and vulnerable species by cats and the Commonwealth Scientific Committee are not correct, and that their science, and, and that cats actually are causes of, um, um, contributors to extinction and ongoing trajectories of extinction because those species are not sicker, but they're more vulnerable in the landscape? Because they just have never had a species like a cat predate on them?
I'm not disputing that cats have a devastating effect on native wildlife in some areas. They're feral cats, and if you look where cats are most devastating and most effective, it's in semi-arid, semi-arid areas, and it's mammals, because there's not a lot of vegetation cover, that's what cats are adapted to kill, and they are very, very effective, and the numbers are higher. We're talking about cats in urban areas and about cat containment.
Sorry, we're talking about all of New South Wales. So I, for example, like Tweed, or for example, Coffs Harbour, or for example, the Northern Tablelands, or for example, Wogga, um, you know, I, I, or for example, um, the Blue Mountains. These are not semi-arid areas, but they are areas where there are experiences of local, um, population problems from cat predation on birds and mammals and reptile species.
I think we need to be, and that's why my first recommendation was to get definitions correct. So domestic cats, as recommended by the R S P C A and what we recommend, are cats that live around where people live and frequent. And therefore, they're a cause of nuisance complaints. Truly feral cats do not live around where people live or frequent, they don't cause nuisance complaints, and they need different solutions, science-based solutions that, in some cases, will be lethal, but habitat protection. Um, and where there's remnant bushland in urban areas that we want to protect, let's consider doing enclosement fencing, let's help those.
So, I'm sorry, so on that note, I remember your evidence before, so you suggesting we should enclose wildlife? That wildlife, cats should be free-roaming, but wildlife shouldn't be?
No.
To protect, I, I'm just unsure.
It's saying that different areas need different protections, and you need to be specific about what area you're talking about.
Sorry, order, order, can we allow the witnesses to answer the question, please?
Well, I was, I was actually asking Dr. Rand the question. So with your evidence, you were sug- I understand this idea of enclosures, particularly those bushland, urban bushland areas, of which are reducing more and more every day because of all the human impacts. Um, are you suggesting that enclosing wildlife is the solution and letting cats free roam continued?
I'm suggesting that it needs to be evidence-based and micro-targeted. So if, you know, what are the species that are susceptible? And are they really threatened, endangered? And then they need targeted protection. So it may be providing inclu- you know, fencing for cat owners. We've, you know, part of our program, where a person had multiple cats, we knew they, we, even after de-sexing, we couldn't stop them going next door, we built her a fence, it was seven hundred dollars. You know, it's not a beautiful fence, but it's effective, so it's being really micro-targeted.
And sorry, that was keeping the cat in?
Keeping cats in, yeah, yeah. So, you know, it's different, so look at where the problem is. Do you have sugar gliders there? So, yes, where that area is, then let everyone know with, you know, full, uh, post, um, letterbox drops, there is a family of sugar gliders in this area. And, you know, looking at this from the, uh, ninety-eight percent were dog attacks and thirty-seven from cat attacks, we need to be also saying, keep your dog inside at night. And then, you know, which, who have got cats there or outside? Can we help you build a containment fence? Or is it more appropriate to build fencing that's dog and cat and fox-proof, um, around that area? But every site's different, and it needs targeted, evidence-based solutions. But I love wildlife, you know, I don't want the next-door cat coming and eating, you know, killing the magpies or the butcher birds that come onto my deck. Um, so, yes, people shouldn't have cats on their property if they don't want them, but you can use nuisance laws to target that. You don't need mandated containment. But every site, you know, it's, it's really micro-targeted solutions. How can we protect that wildlife best that we care about?
But so with, um, sorry, if there's more questions, but with, um, earlier on, I think Professor Legg gave some, um, um, experienced evidence about Tweedshire Council. Again, I, I'm familiar with the Tweed as well, because I know how much work they've done on the education programs, and they've got a very, very active staff around wildlife protection and, uh, welfare for cats and dogs and so on. And, um, she said that it's their council offices, like the education programs have been gangbusters, they're working really well, but they are feeling they're at that point where if they just had some containment controls, particular to their L G A, that that would be really helpful for achieving, as you said. It's got to be the outcome that we're focused on. Would you agree that perhaps sometimes?
I would say, go ahead and look at, measure the outcome.
Yeah, and measure.
Because I, you know, it, you have to realize, the research we've done is people are trying to do the best thing they can.
I agree, yeah, I think that's.
They don't have the resources, they may not have the knowledge, they don't know about bedtime feeding. Let's, let's find out where their problem areas, and they are low socioeconomic, and they're not on internet. Go around and say, this is how you can contain your cat. And the squirrel gliders, all those bent, you know, bent winged bats. You know, there's a family here, show pretty pictures, you know, help them, make it easy for them, and get them involved. But don't demonize cats across New South Wales and bring in mandated containment. Even in a local government area, I would say, well, try it, make it a research project, but it's not going to work because it fails to understand the cause of the problem. To Tweed, I'd say, where are the species that you really need to protect? Let's look at it. We are involved in, I don't know where you want me to.
No, no, please continue, that's okay.
So, for example, we're working, you know, people who don't want cats on their property, you have to work with them, you have to respect that. We put camera traps on there, and we have, you know, real-time camera traps. So one person had, she said, oh, I've got all these cats coming on the property. So we took photographs of the cats that were coming on the property, of those individual cats, put around flyers a townhouse radius, and one person contacted, said, oh, that's my cat, and I had to move, and I left it with someone else because it was an outdoor cat, and the, the tenant, the, um, landlord wouldn't let me have a cat. So we said, well, actually, they can now. So he came and got the cat. And she said, well, most of them have gone, but there's one cat still coming. So we put up camera traps, and there wasn't a black cat sitting in the driveway where she thought there was. We said, well, actually, we can see the cats coming through one hole on your fence, walking across your property, going to the other, through the other hole. And she said, oh, huh, well, I'll get my fences fixed. And I said, well, that's great, and let us know if you're still. And I said, "Well, that's great, and let us know if you still got problems, because we'll continue to work with you. We can put in water deterrence to keep them off your property." So it's, you know, it really is a micro-targeted...
That doesn't fix the wildlife problem, though, does it? I mean, I see what you're saying.
Well, it keeps the cats off...
Off that one property.
Yes, but you then have to work out where those cats are coming from. Help people get them sterilised. You know, is this cat a problem? Because let's face it, you know, and research we're going to be publishing, it's actually not many cats that kill birds. You know, and we're using video collars. And the same... There was data published from New Zealand, and yes, the wildlife's different.
Very.
But birds are birds, you know. And they've actually got more ground-living birds. And there was only one bird brought back, and that was already dead before we brought it back, you know, out of what they killed. They killed a lot of the weckers, which are insects that are protected. But, you know, let's... We need to get better data, but the population effects aren't documented. It's, you know, yes, cats kill birds, yes, we want fewer free-roaming cats. You know, we don't want predation. I don't want the birds on my property killed either. But there are solutions, you know, the targeted de-sexing and micro-target the problem areas, and then look at where wildlife will benefit from cat containment and help those people. You know, or put containment... You know, if it's appropriate, put containment fencing. And we know now, in the... Where feral cats are a problem and they are threatened and endangered species, one of the most effective solutions is containment fencing and removing all feral pests.
And really, what you're talking about with the example that you gave is community engagement. You know, if their education programs are going as well, as you said, then they've already got community engagement. Now you just have to get them interested in the local wildlife. And then you need to make the connection between their cats and the local wildlife. And then you get people excited about the project, and you make it a little community thing and get people involved, and then they get their neighbours involved, and, "Oh, we're part of this program." And that comes from education, not from mandated containment, because you're going to get people that just won't comply, and then your whole program falls apart. But if you can get the community engagement and get, like, all involved and excited about it, that's what education does. That's why education has to come first.
Well, that has, that's the point with the Tweed.
I might jump in here. The honourable Aileen McDonald has a question.
Thank you. My question is to Dr Rand, and I was interested in the interaction there. So I just wondered if... Would that describe your One Welfare approach or what you were just talking about then? Or is... If it's not that, could you tell me?
So One Welfare is a multifaceted approach. It's looking how best to protect wildlife, to protect people, and to protect animals. And they're all interconnected.
Yeah.
And so what we see with these multi-cat... And we don't call them colonies, they're people who are caring for multiple cats. They want help, and they're trying to do the best they can. They're compassionate people, and they will continue to feed cats that come in and, you know, need food. But, you know, if you help them, then they say, "Oh, I feel so much better. You know, I was worried about, I didn't know what I was going to do. You know, and these cats give me joy when I get up." So you've helped them, you've helped the welfare of the cats, and you've helped the environment because you've reduced the free number of free-roaming cats. And it might be building a fence around their property.
Yeah.
You know, because again, you know, in Rosewood, the paper we've just published, which showed a 60% decrease in intake, 85% in euthanasia, and 39% reduction in cat-related complaints. The median individual household weekly... Sorry, the median individual income is $636 a week, like bust on the latest census. Like, how do you afford de-sexing of even one cat at a private veterinarian, which can be between... For a female cat, between $300 and $500 with microchipping. If it's pregnant, it can be up towards $500. How do you afford cat containment when you're in 40% of that population's in rental properties?
Where's Rosewood? Is that the Rosewood in the River Arena?
No, no, it's Ipswich. The city of Ipswich in Queensland. It's a rural country town. We've got a big community cat program. And when I talk about community cat programs, it's not just de-sexing, it's assisting people to keep their cats. And sometimes we have to provide cat food. So, and say to them, "Look, you know, when it's winter, if you can socialise some of these cats, we can help you get them adopted, but here's cat food so you can afford to feed them and feed them properly so they don't have to wander around. Please feed them twice a day." And so they're coming, they're staying around, and we've got camera trap data, we've got... And I've got a presentation, you know, you can see the cats, we put tracking collars on them, say, "Stay around the food bowl if it's had a good food." Cats are opportunists.
Are you able to provide the committee with that, your present... Is that something that is available?
Yes, yes, and I'd have to look at what's from the Animal Justice Party because I gave a presentation on there. But yes, you know, but it really needs explanation because most of the... I'd have to tape, I guess, record it because lots of the slides are just pictures.
Okay.
But yes, I'm happy to do that.
I would also like to hear... Sorry, I have to go more.
One other question, because you mentioned de-sexing, de-sexing there. So what funding structure do you think would be best place to support the high...
Intensity?
Yeah, de-sexing programs? Bearing in mind your, say, One Welfare program, which I think I kind of get now, you know, it's not just, it's a community thing, watching out for things. So the next stage is that, so.
So before you answer that, the One Welfare concept is recognising that humans are part of the environment, the animals are part of the environment, that humans interact with the animals, and that we're all interconnected, and that our welfare is related to their welfare. And if our welfare is good, the environment's welfare is good as well. And that's what One Welfare is all about, it's that interconnectedness. So how you incorporate it is what Dr Rand is talking about. This is how we're doing it with cats. We've been talking about One Welfare in all of our submissions for the last couple of years.
Yes, I know, and that's why I just wanted a better understanding. And I think Dr Rand in saying, you know, someone saying, "Cats are going through her property, what can she do?" And so fixing holes on either side, that's part of the One... Even though she's not a cat owner, she's helping... That's, I just, yeah, anyway.
It's very much a holistic, and it's recognising that interconnectedness. So if you improve animal welfare, you improve human wellbeing and you improve the environment as well. And it is, it does not a one thing fits all in terms of the solution. And getting back to your question about funding, certainly that one-off state government funding has been very effective, but it needs to be ongoing. Like, cats, cat management is lifelong. But we will get it under control, and the amount of money you have to spend over time will decrease as long as you don't stop. And it really is most effective when there's local government involvement and engagement, and particularly the animal management officers, because they know where the problem cats are. And rather than trapping them, taking them down to the pound, trap them and take them to get de-sexed and then work with people. You know, it's about people getting trust for the animal management officers, that they're not compliance-based. You know, compliance is needed, but it should be assistive in the first instance, and only use compliance when that fails.
Yeah.
And so, yes, through, you know, state government, but contributions from local government, welfare agencies, rescue groups do a fantastic amount. And, you know, there's a nice model with the Cat Protections Society where the rescue routes really helped. Get rid of registration, make microchipping effective, send out SMSs every three months saying, you know, "Are your details up to date?" Because you can get, you know, Victoria, I saw one council's got a 70% return of cats to owners, like it's getting them microchipped and identified. But here in New South Wales, your return-to-owner rate's at 3%, and Victoria and Queensland are 7%. People are not microchipping because of the way that they can be then traced to pay registration. And, you know, if the cat wasn't de-sexed by four months of age and you've got that other huge cost, it's just a barrier. And if you look at the costs of cat management that were reported in that, the Centre for International Economics, I think I've got the name right, you know, the cost of cat management are about seven to 10 times for local governments than what that revenue's bringing in. And that's not considering the administrative costs. They got rid of it in Queensland, registration costs or registration, because of the administrative burden and the little amount of money it was bringing in. So make it easy. We want cats microchipped, it works. All the semi-owned cats that remain semi-owned under our very special permit, and when I talk about the semi-owned cats remaining semi-owned, they've got a microchip in them, they've got actually my personal mobile phone number on the microchip as a secondary contact detail. But they're really what you would call trap neuter and return, plus, you know, management on... They've been cared for people. And we're doing also shelter neuter and return a little bit. And I'd just like to say, that is life-saving for people. So the shelters are all trying to get their euthanasia rates down. So a shy and timid cat comes in, and a volunteer or staff members or both will work with that cat, try and get its trust, and it's starting to show trust. But after two or three weeks or four weeks, however long they can keep them, you know, an assessment's done, "Oh, you can't pick it up," or it gets frightened when a stranger comes in, and a decision's made to euthanise it. So you can imagine, when that person comes into work or the volunteer comes in the next day and the cage is empty while the cat was euthanised. Or worse, they're asked to take it down to the euthanasia room and maybe even hold it in a small facility. What that does to their mental health. And so what we're able to do is to de-sex those cats, and if they're in good condition, you know, someone's feeding them. So we put them back to where they were found. And it's only when... We've de-sexed over 3,500 cats now. Of those, only 10% stay semi-owned with a multi-cat carer, and then half a percent, or a bit over half a percent, are returned to field. But that is life-saving for the mental health of people. And some of those cats are turning up, and we're hearing that, you know, it was actually an owned cat, but they didn't reclaim it, and they're... Most of them are really happy that the cats come home, it's now de-sexed, microchipped, and it was vaccinated. So, yes, it works and it is life-saving.
Thank you. Sorry, one, just on the de-sexing, how do you address, say, concerns about the long-term sustainability of de-sexing? So I think you've answered part of that question before, but if there was anything you wanted to add?
It's got to be long-term.
Yes.
And, you know, what I... You know, it's... You can never work away from it, even if you're using lethal means, unless you've got those containment enclosures and you kill everything that's inside. And even if a tree falls over it, then you've got to manage that. It's lifelong because cats breed, and there's always people moving into areas. We know, I think the average length of tenancy at a site in Queensland, I looked at, was 17 months. So you've got people moving into those areas that are all low socio-economic as well. Maybe they were feeding a cat, but they can't take it to the next property because they just can't, you know, even though landlords can't ban them any longer, if you're 10, you know, 20 people looking at a rental property and you say you've got a pet, well, you know, you're at the bottom. So some of them, they just can't find an option. And, you know, they've got the perception, which may or may not be right, depending on the local government, that it'll be killed if they take it to the pound. If it's owned, you know, if they say it's owned, then they have to pay maybe $100 at a shelter, and the shelter may be, you know, 20 kilometres away, and they don't have a car, and you can't take it on public transport. So they leave it. So, yes, it's lifelong, but it's recognising where the problem areas are and helping those people do better. They want to do better. They want to do the right thing. That's what they're telling us.
You have to look at, how much is it going to cost now versus how much is it going to cost another 10 years if we don't do something now?
That kind of it, that's my question, yeah.
Thank you. I've just got one very quick question. We have gone over time, so just a very short answer, but it was just something that came up that I thought of. You mentioned that in New South Wales, so few cats are registered and microchipped. If there was local councils that brought in cat containment laws, would that potentially see a whole lot of companion cats accidentally killed if they ended up in the pound but weren't microchipped and registered? Because the pound would assume that, or they wouldn't be able to actually track down the family of this particular cat. And so a lot of companion cats that have a home could be killed?
Of course, and also, microchips fail. I've had one of my own cats, we've had to replace a microchip. And it was just by chance, we checked that it actually worked. Like, how often on your annual vet visits do you check the microchip actually works? So that's a risk as well, and it might not be that the owner's done anything wrong, it might just be the, you know, they're computer chips, they fail. So you can't rely on them 100%. So that's something we need to look at as well, is regular checks that your chips actually work.
Yeah, and the research shows that cats are 13 times more likely to return home than come home because of a visit to the shelter or pound. So people often don't start to look for them because they assume, you know, the cat will come home, and, you know, after the mandatory holding period for an unidentified animal, it can be euthanised or, you know, then it becomes the property of whatever the service provider or the council. And, you know, and, you know, there is a limited capacity to re-home timid and shy cats. And that's why it's so important to engage these semi-owners, help them take ownership, and then talk to them about at least bedtime feeding, and then move from there. And over time, help them on those steps up the good cat caring behaviour ladder.
There's also a disincentive to surrendering cats. So people will feel better about abandoning a cat that at least will live, because if you surrender it to a pound, there's no withholding period. So there's no... Because they're not looking for an owner. So pounds and RSPCA and whatnot, they can euthanise them immediately. You hand the cat over, and by the time you've gone out the door, the cat's gone. So why would you surrender your cat? You'd better off dump it with the local colony. So we need to remove those disincentives to make it easier for people to be responsible pet owners.
Thank you, thank you both. We have gone well over time now, but obviously this was a very important session. So thank you, all of you, for coming today to give your evidence. There was some questions taken on notice, which the secretary will be in contact with you both about, and thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I now welcome our next witness. And I start by asking them to please state their name, position, title, and swear either an oath or an affirmation.
Thank you. I'm Dr Helen Swarbrick. I'm president of the Campus Cats New South Wales Animal Welfare Charity. And I solemnly and sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Wonderful, thank you. And Professor, do you have a short opening statement you'd like to make?
I don't have anything formal, but I thought I might just explain why I'm here. I'm an emeritus professor in optometry from the University of New South Wales. But the reason I'm here is because of my involvement over the last 17 years in an organisation called Campus Cats New South Wales. Now, we have looked after the cats free-roaming on the campus for 17 years. I'm a scientist, and I like to keep track of things. So I've kept data on our cat population over that 17 years, and we've been able to demonstrate that our management approach has reduced the population of cats on the campus quite significantly. I first got involved because I became aware that there were a lot of stray cats, free-roaming cats, on the campus, and the university was starting to trap and kill them with the help of a pest controller. We decided that we would offer the university a better approach, which was based on trap, neuter, and return principles. And we got the university's agreement to give this approach a six-month trial. At that stage, there were approximately 90 cats on the campus. We started by doing an audit of the cats on campus. We then started to trap and de-sex female cats by priority on the campus, and then on the campus, and then release them back onto the campus once they had been de-sexed. And an army of staff and student and community volunteers fed these cats every day, and we have maintained that approach since then. As I said, we started out with approximately ninety cats on the campus. Today, seventeen years later, we have eight cats on the campus. All those cats, apart from one, are de-sexed, microchipped and registered on the pet registry. So that's why I'm here today. It's a very focused presentation that I'd like to be involved with, really addressing just one of the terms of reference of this inquiry, which is the benefits and efficacy of large-scale cat de-sexing programmes.
And I find it interesting that, you know, you've got, you talked, that you sort of said there was this huge reduction. I think, on your submission, I think, was it seventy-eight percent of a reduction over nine years? Was it from the de-sexing? Is that correct?
It was a combination of a number of approaches. Obviously, when we first got involved, we had a look at the cats on campus, and there were some that were pretty sick, and very few at that stage, but they were taken to the vet and euthanised. Some of the cats were actually quite friendly, and certainly over time, some of these were rehomed, and particularly kittens and young cats were rehomed. But the biggest impact in terms of reduction in numbers was just by stopping cats from reproducing. And so over time, the reduction in numbers was basically from rehoming, from euthanasia and death, and just natural attrition, as you can imagine, over seventeen years.
Wonderful. Now, you note in your submission around this legal controversy surrounding trap and neuter programmes, and there's this sort of real legal grey area because, you know, it's not, it's not, it's, when you return that animal, they're still actually being cared for, so they're not actually abandoned. But it's not clarified in the law. Do you think that having that actually clarified within legislation would encourage more groups to get involved and to do more de-sexing to actually reduce the number of homeless cats that we have in the state?
Undoubtedly. And I would also say that we're not alone in running what is effectively a trap, neuter, return programme. I'm aware of many, many community groups who undercover and very discreetly do actually apply trap, neuter and return strategies to manage street cats and stray cats in our urban areas. But they're doing it sort of with one eye over their shoulder because of the potential of that being interpreted as abandoning of cats. And I think this is a key part of what we have done on the campus, and what I'd like to emphasise going forward if we're going to allow trap, neuter and return type of approaches, is it is another part of it, and that is the management of the cats once they are returned. On campus, we've done that through daily feeding, through monitoring of the cats by the feeders, by taking the cats, retrapping them and taking them to the vet when they get sick, all that sort of thing. So it's an ongoing management through the cat's life that's also an important aspect of the trap, neuter, return strategy.
Thank you. And that's quite, you know, I suppose there might be people listening in, or there may be members on the committee that haven't sort of worked with these groups before. This is quite, that's quite a typical thing when there is these sort of community cat caring programmes, that locals within the community do volunteer to become involved in that feeding programmes and the care programmes, once the cats are de-sexed?
If a cat is trapped and it's healthy, someone is already looking after it. And so returning it back to where it was trapped means you're returning it to its home where it is being cared for. You may not be able to identify immediately who that person is, but if the cat is in good health, then clearly somebody is already managing it.
And there's been a lot of talk today about potentially allowing local governments to have cat containment laws. Now, obviously, if there was a cat containment law where the university campus was, those cats that are being cared for by students and volunteers wouldn't be able to be contained, or they're not currently contained. Essentially, that would mean that those cats would have to be killed or collected by council and taken to the pound. What would that mean for the people who are volunteering and are part of these community cat programmes?
Well, obviously, it would be a major negative effect on these people who have got very fond of the cats they go and feed every day, or once a week, or whatever. And many of these cats just are not tame enough to happily live in a home environment or in a contained situation. Over time, through being fed every day to getting to know that the people that come and feed them, many of them do tame down. I've seen a cat that we couldn't approach at all, that hissed and ran away, eventually through becoming more familiar with the feeder, coming up and rubbing round the legs of the feeder as the food was being prepared. And eventually, that cat would sit in the garden and allow students to come up and pat that cat, and then finally, we were able to place that cat in a home. It's not something that happens overnight, but that obviously is an ideal outcome. But many of these cats take a long time, and to just round them up and try and contain them would not be good for the cats themselves. If we're thinking about the one welfare principle, it would go against the welfare of many of those cats that we look after on the campus.
Thank you. Now, obviously, people, one thing we kept hearing today is people who care about cats also care about wildlife, also care about dogs. And so, you know, there's, and you mentioned the one welfare process yourself as well. One concern that has been brought up is whether or not cats are killing wildlife. But what I'm also constantly hearing is that when you're looking at these TNR programmes, and communities are actually looking after these cats, you've mentioned several times about the volunteers that go and feed the cats. When these community cats and colony cats are being cared for, de-sexed, taken to the vet and fed, do you think that, you know, that significantly reduces the impact that they would have on wildlife because they're already being fed?
I'm not naive about this, and I would say that it's quite possible that there are cats on the campus that we've returned that then would catch a bird, or particularly catch the rats that live on the campus, and they're very good rodent control in that respect. But the bottom line here is that the wildlife will be safer if there's fewer cats. If we can control the population, and we've found a very effective way of doing it, then overall, that's going to have less impact on the wildlife. I'd also make the point that in the environment in which we're running our programme, it's a university campus. There's buildings everywhere, there's roads, there's parking areas, there's these beautiful, the campus gardeners do a lovely job of planting these very attractive monoculture-type gardens, which are not really conducive to provide an environment for wildlife. And so in actual fact, the reason why we don't have pothoos running down the main campus walkway has got nothing to do with the cats. It's got to do with the environment in which these cats live.
Thank you. The Honourable Peter Primrose, did you have any questions?
Not all. I've asked all witnesses today, for various reasons, if they would have a look at the recommendations that were made by local government, New South Wales, to make amendments to the Companion Animals Act. And there were some very specific ones that they have relating to clarifying how you, what entails cat ownership and powers for seizing a cat under Section thirty-two. I was wondering if I could get you to please take that on notice and have a look at that as well, and any comments that you have, that would be, that'd be much appreciated.
I'd be happy to do that, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Honourable Eileen McDonald.
When you were talking about the TNR programme, what were the, say, key challenges in implementing it? And in that, how did you address them?
The key elements in implementing it were twofold. Firstly, cats are not actually that easy to trap. I'm a very good cat trapper now, I've learned through a lot of experience. But also, as a full-time worker, you don't have the time to be doing that. So it's the practicalities of actually trapping the cats, getting them into the vets, bringing them back. The other big challenge that we've had is financial, and we are a small charity. We rely completely on donations. We've been very lucky to identify a couple of local veterinary practices that will give us very good reduced charity rates for de-sexing. But nevertheless, that's been a big challenge to continue the funding in order to keep the programme going.
And then, just as a follow-up, do you think your model, or the model of the campus, could somehow be scaled in other areas? And if so, what do you think would be required to do that? I understand, you know, that had to have bespoke solutions in different areas, but do you think your model could be like a guide?
I think it certainly could be a guide for many areas, and you're absolutely right. Not, one size does not fit all in terms of solutions. But the model that we've developed, I think, has worked so effectively. And also, over time, we've been able to maintain, for the last seven or eight years, less than ten cats on the campus.
Yeah.
But I'd make a comment here, that one of the challenges is always that you can't just do the de-sexing and walk away. The campus is not an island, and there's a lot of cats that do immigrate onto the campus. And through our model, we've been able to keep track of those immigrant cats. As soon as they get on campus, we then either trap them and return them to the owners, or we trap them and get them de-sexed and embrace them into the campus community. But it takes constant vigilance to do this. So it's not something that you could go in and do for two or three years and then walk away, or else you'd find that the population would then rise back up due to the immigration problem.
And what kind of birdlife would be on the campus?
Rainbow lorikeets, a lot of Indian miners, a lot of noisy miners, and a lot of curwongs. And in actual fact, the curwongs are the large birds, are the ones that really predate on the smaller birds.
Yeah, okay. And is, are other sort of societies within the campus sort of monitoring the birdlife?
It's interesting you ask that, because right at the beginning of our programme, we did approach the environmental science and the biology schools to see if they'd be interested in running a parallel programme to try and monitor the impact on the wildlife on the campus. And we weren't able to get that one off the ground. I thought it would be a wonderful programme for students to run, to actually complement what we were doing and provide evidence that we were helping out with the campus wildlife. But I'd make the comment, we don't have a lot of wildlife. This is an urban, busy campus.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
I've got a few more questions, if I jump in. All this work that you're doing is funded through charitable fundraising and volunteering time, which I think you mentioned in an answer to my colleague. Do you believe that there should be government funding to manage cat colonies and to do a lot of this de-sexing, and also for the rescue organisations, as part of our response overall to the overpopulation of cats in New South Wales?
Absolutely, yes. And we have struggled to make our funding stretch, but now we're at a point of reasonable success with a low number of cats. But certainly, the cat rescue groups and the cat, small cat welfare groups out there in the community are often funding what they do out of their back pockets. They do an enormous amount of work. I know there have been, there was a scheme funded by OLG a couple of years ago, which gave a lot of funds to some of those rescue groups. But it's only a limited time, and it's not like you can just stop. These things, this sort of funding has got to go on. So something similar to the OLG funding regimen would be a wonderful thing, but it needs to be an ongoing type of thing to fund these rescue groups, because it doesn't just stop.
And do you think that there also needs to be more research into the, into some of these TNR programmes? You know, obviously, yours is almost like an accidental research project, where you've been able to actually try and work with this particular colony of cats. But I believe that there's only a little bit of research out there that shows, and obviously yours is another example, that shows that over time, you've been able to actually effectively manage the number of cats and significantly reduce the number of cats over a period of time. Do we need more research into this space as well?
Oh, it'd be lovely to have more research, but I think it's important to recognise that a lot of research has been done overseas, particularly out of the US, particularly out of Europe and the UK, that shows similar sort of findings to what we've been able to find on the university campus. So I think that if you're going to find a way to spend money, it's probably not to throw it at research projects, it's to throw it at subsidised or free de-sexing programmes.
And to steal a question from the Honourable Peter Primrose from earlier today, I think he asked if there was somewhere else in the world that's doing this really well. And it sounds like you're sort of saying that overseas, they have done these TNR programmes, and they are effectively reducing the number of cats through these programmes. Can you tell us a little bit more about, you know, if you know, like, what countries these are, or where you've sort of seen worldwide where these programmes have been really effective?
There's a lot of publications out there. It doesn't take a lot of looking through the scientific literature. I know from the States, for example, there was a pop, in one of the large cities, there was a TNR project that ran over something like fifteen years and reduced the population from three hundred cats to zero. So there's a lot of documentation, and certainly in the States, there's some very good results from TNR-type programmes. Also, there's a lot of community cat-related programmes where de-sexing is part of the management approach from Europe. We all know about the cats of Rome, for example, where the population there has been maintained through basically a de-sexing and community care type of approach. So, yes, there are many examples from overseas.
And lastly, you know, as a committee, we will be able to make recommendations to the government in this report. What sort of recommendations would you like to see within that report made by this committee?
First is to support the concept of large-scale cat de-sexing programmes, and to make those possible through encouragement and encouraging also large-scale de-sexing clinics, high-volume de-sexing clinics. There has to be funding, and the funding has to be ongoing. And I think the third recommendation that I've made in my submission is that POKTA needs to be looked at, so that this abandonment clause is modified to allow a situation where cats can be returned in a good, well-run TNR programme without people being at risk of prosecution for abandoning cats, that in actual fact are being well looked after.
Thank you. Well, thank you so much for your evidence today. I believe that there was a question taken on notice, which the secretary will be in contact about, but the committee may have further questions as well. But thank you again for your evidence and your time today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to the end of today. Thank you, everyone.